Good morning. Welcome to City Hall and welcome to our council chambers. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. And today is Friday, February 9th, 2007. We meet three times a week, Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays. And all meetings are open to the public. So for those of you that cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised on Channel 35 as well as on our website. So I know that we have a special presentation at this moment. And I'd like to make sure that in the back, they acknowledge the mayor and everyone else for our first presentation for Black History Month. We can hear the drums. As we're waiting, I'd like to also make sure we ask all council members, we are still waiting for Councilmember Han, Weesar, Parks, Reyes, Rosendahl, and Weiss. If you could please make your way down to the council chambers.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
Good morning. Welcome to City Hall and welcome to our council chambers. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. And today is Friday, February 9th, 2007. We meet three times a week, Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays. And all meetings are open to the public. So for those of you that cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised on Channel 35 as well as on our website. So I know that we have a special presentation at this moment. And I'd like to make sure that in the back, they acknowledge the mayor and everyone else for our first presentation for Black History Month. We can hear the drums. As we're waiting, I'd like to also make sure we ask all council members, we are still waiting for Councilmember Han, Weesar, Parks, Reyes, Rosendahl, and Weiss. If you could please make your way down to the council chambers.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
No, I understand that we are here about the evening.
Thank you so very much. I'd like to acknowledge our mayor, our city attorney, Raka Del Godio, our city comptroller, Laura Chick, who are here with us today in the chambers.
Mr. Parks? Boys, Mr. Parks looking dressed to the nines. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Oh, no, that's not good enough. Good morning, everyone. Yeah, let's give a hand to the Nigerian Talking Drum Ensemble. And I was saying to Stevie Wonder as we were walking down to the chamber, it's great to see the diversity here today. And to see, I said there are six members of this Nigerian Talking Drum Ensemble. And only in Los Angeles would two of them not be from Africa. So this is a great, beautiful thing. Give him a big hand, all of them. I stand here with the Los Angeles City Council in celebration of African-American Heritage Month 2007. This year's theme, "Lift Every Voice", remembering our ancestors, empowering our community. We're here today to honor this year's recipient of the Dream of Los Angeles Award, Mrs. Ethel Bradley. Yes, make sure everybody's... I don't have to tell you that Mrs. Bradley holds the distinction of being the First Lady of the City of Los Angeles for 20 years. And throughout her 30 years of public service, Mrs. Bradley served the City of Los Angeles extremely well and is affectionately remembered for her gracious demeanor and her civic and humanitarian efforts. As First Lady, she hosted many distinguished guests of the City of Los Angeles, including the Queen of England, the Emperor of Japan, the King of Jordan, and the great Nelson Mandela, among many, many others. Mrs. Bradley co-founded the Black Women's Forum, organizing women volunteers to provide public tours of City Hall and host receptions for dignitaries. She continues in her commitment to serve the City of Los Angeles by helping and inspiring others. I'm pleased. Let me correct that. I am honored. To recognize your significant role of sharing diversity and cultural education, your dedication keeps African-American traditions alive and vibrant in our city, congratulations. There we go. And then I also have a congratulations with many wherestes signed by the entire city council. And on their behalf, I acknowledge your gracious spirit, this beautiful child in front of us who represents the future of our community. So on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, congratulations.
There we go, okay. And now, Mrs. Bradley.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is quite an honor for me to come back home. I have a feeling home. I'd like to thank the members of the city council, the mayor, the citizens of Los Angeles for all your love, your prayers, and your support throughout these 30 years of working. I should also thank my beautiful daughters, Lorraine and Phyllis, for their support. I should always remember this day. Wonderful day. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, today is Ethel's 88th birthday.
If now I could have Judge Terry Hatter, please join us. You know, this year's spirit of Los Angeles recipient is none other than the Senior United States District Judge, Chief Judge Emeritus of the Central District of California, the Honorable Terry J. Hatter Jr. He has served, and by the way, I hear outside what we want, justice. A familiar refrain. Let me tell you. I know the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, historically one of the most progressive appeals courts anywhere in the nation. And no one has stood for justice longer, more with an incredible passion and the ability to articulate as Judge Terry Hatter has. So let's give him a big hand. He's served as the U.S. District Judge for the Central District of California since December of 1979. On March 1st, 1998, he became the chief judge of the Central District, the largest federal district in the nation, serving some 18 million people. Prior to his appointment to the federal bench, Judge Hatter sat on the Superior Court for Los Angeles County. He also served as a special assistant and executive assistant to Mayor Tom Bradley, directing urban development and criminal justice planning for the City of Los Angeles. Judge Hatter is in his second term as a member of the U.S. Judicial Conference Committee on Court Administration and Management, a true servant to the people. But again, we honor him with the spirit because there are few people on the bench who understand better what the civil rights movement has meant to all of us. Today, we celebrate African-American Heritage Month. And as I've said many, many times, I'm here today because there was a Tom Bradley. I'm here today, we're here, the diversity, the women, the people of color who are here today are here on this council because there was a Civil Rights Act, because there was a Voting Rights Act, because there were people who opened up the country for us. Judge Hatter was one of those people who applied the law in a fair way, in a way that respected the Constitution and honored the idea that all men and women are created equal. And so today, we honor him with the Spirit of Los Angeles Award. Thank you. And I also have, there we go. And on behalf of, as you can see, these are... On behalf of the entire city council, this goes through a number of wherestes, including the fact that he was born in Chicago, Illinois, in a year that we don't need to share with everybody. But what we do know is that you represent that spirit that is Los Angeles in a way that is unique, in a way that we feel compelled to honor.
Thank you so much.
And now, ladies and gentlemen, Judge Terry J. Hatter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council, other elected and appointed officials, all the dignitaries, that means everybody else who's here. And I want to thank the mayor, first of all, for that wonderful introduction. It's about the second best I've ever had. About a week ago, I was speaking somewhere and the person who was supposed to introduce me wasn't able to be there, so I introduced myself. But I am delighted. My wife looked at the program and she said, Terry, you're not going to speak, are you? I said, well, just to receive this award. She said, well, that's good. I said, well, what's the problem? And she said, well, you know, you have two problems when you speak. And I said, yes. I mean, we've been married 48 years in June, and I hadn't heard this. I said, what are those two problems? She said, well, you tend to wander from your subject. And I said, yeah. She said, but then you come back to it. So I don't know. We have four of those, too, with the two girls and two boys, and the two granddaughters and two grandsons now. Well, I'm particularly thrilled at this honor. I worked for a person who, you all know, Tom Bradley. We now have another great mayor in this city, and as he tells you, he stands on the shoulders of Tom. We heard, and I'm so honored, too, to be part of a celebration where the First Lady, who served longest as First Lady of anybody in the history of our city, is being honored. Stevie Wonder, and I give him full credit for Martin Luther King Jr.'s day being a holiday. And then, of course, he's written so much wonderful music that we've all enjoyed, including "Happy Birthday," and I thought he was going to sing that to Mrs. Bradley. Maybe he'll do that a little later. Well, I'm not going to take much longer, but a week ago, a number of us federal judges were in Santa Barbara at a meeting, and with us was Sandra Day O'Connor, Justice Sandra Day O'Connor, who's now retired. She lamented the fact that civics is no longer being taught in our public schools, and she's working with a foundation to see if something can be done about that. Equally sad, as far as I'm concerned, is that history, American history, is not really taught in our schools. When I was in grade school in Chicago, and by the way, I've lived in Los Angeles longer than any other place in life. It just shows that I'm getting older and older. But anyway, when I was a colored lad at Forestville Grade School, we had African, no, it wasn't African, it was Negro History Day. By the time I got to high school, at Hyde Park High School, that was overwhelmingly Jewish, with the largest minority population being Nisa, sadly, many of whom were the victims of one of the worst crimes that we ever committed against American citizens with the internment. Then we had Negro History Week. Then somewhat later, we got to African-American History Month. This particular celebration started on Sunday in the wonderful Brookings AME Church with its dynamic minister, and I see him over here, Reverend Murph. And Reverend Murph mentioned that even though we're up to a month now, it's the shortest month of the year, but what I'm most concerned about is that we have American history, that it not just be European history, which ought to be a part of it, but only one part of it. And today, as I'm honored, I know that my ancestors, who are African, who are Scottish, Irish, who are Native American, my great-grandfather from Cuba, a grandfather from Venezuela, that they're all proud. And the mayor was at that session on Sunday, and he talked about how one of his favorite programs of all time was Roots. Well, I've always had a problem with Roots. Not that it didn't show the African portion of our Roots, but it didn't show the African-American part, because the African-American part was the blending of the African with what we have now. As I look around this room, I'm so glad that we're not being pushed into a corner by those who now espouse that we be colorblind. To miss all this beauty would be such a shame. There's no reason that we can't recognize color and be fair, and that is what I urge. I couldn't be happier today unless I were to see one of my four grandchildren standing one day to be honored, not for African-American History Month, but for American History Month. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Judge Hatter, for those inspiring words. This year's Hope of Los Angeles Award goes to a legend in his own lifetime, an artist, a songwriter, a musician, producer, who over the course of his career has been honored with twenty-four Grammy Awards and the prestigious Grammy Lifetime Achievement Award. Stevie Wonder's been making music since he was a little boy, but he's done more than that. He's enriched lives for more than four decades, demonstrating with his great musical talents a compassion, a humanity, a love for peace and harmony in the world. His extraordinary humanitarian efforts, his philanthropic leadership, his generosity of spirit throughout his career, from little Stevie Wonder to adult superstar. Stevie is beloved throughout the world. As Judge Hatter said, it was Stevie Wonder who spearheaded the realization of Martin Luther King Day as a national holiday. Singing, "Happy birthday to ya, happy birthday..."
You have some competition there.
His participation in the 1985 We Are the World fundraiser for hunger in Africa was a music industry milestone. His involvement to put an end to apartheid lifted a nation from apartheid to democracy. Stevie Wonder has always been recognized for his philanthropic contributions, received the Distinguished Services Award from the President's Committee on Employment of Handicapped People, the Honorary Global Founders Award for Mothers Against Drunk Driving. He received a Golden Globe and an Academy Award in 1984 for, "I just called to say I love you." I just called, from the movie Woman, The Woman in Red. He was inducted into the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame in 1989. And my daughter, Maricela, who's here today, thirty-one years old, made me a grandpa twelve years ago. When she was about seven years old, her favorite song was Ebony and Ivory, and it was one of my favorite songs as well. So...
I'll sing that one.
But only in a duet. Come on up here, sister, because we're Ebony and Ivory. Stevie, you give us hope, and today we give you just a little bit of love. Congratulations. On behalf of the great city of Los Angeles, the entire city council, our elected leaders who are here today, all acknowledging this presentation to Stevie Wonder as the Hope of Los Angeles. We're going to put this down, take a couple pictures. And I'm going to give this to you. And we have one last acknowledgement. Stevie, on behalf, Stevie, on behalf of the entire city council, all of whom have signed this declaration of congratulations, of acknowledgement of your life, of your spirit, and of the hope that you represent to our great city. Congratulations.
I, first of all, want to give all praise to God for the opportunity, the opportunity of being here. The mayor's chambers, this is amazing here. Looks kind of good in here, actually. But I want to say that I receive, and with much respect, the honors that have been given me today in memory of my mother, Lila May Hardaway. I was born, as you know, in Saginaw, was raised in Detroit, but I spend a lot of my life now here in Los Angeles. And as being a member of this family, of this city, this state, of this country, and as well, a member of the family of this world, of life, my commitment is to do God's work. When I say that, I, I look at the world, and as much as we have moved forward in so many ways, it seems that we have become yet blinded by the direction of moving forward to positivity completely. As we celebrate African-American Heritage Month, I wonder what would Dr. King and many of those that fought for civil rights, what would they think about the absurdness of, the absurdness of hate groups in America, gang violence in America, war, wars that are happening in the world? What would they think? We cannot continue to just sing, "We shall overcome, we must overcome." And for those who are haters of the world, to whatever God you serve, you must know that the God that you serve is about the perpetuation of life. And if you are not about that, you are not committed to the God that you say that you serve. So I hope that we can move forward as a people, as a united people, and bring the world to the greatness that God really means for it to be. I thank you, Mayor Veracosa, and Honoris. Thank you very much. God bless you.
All right, here we go. I have to do this before I go. Somebody give me a C. Say yay, yay. This is to you, Mrs. Bradley. One, two. Happy birthday to ya, happy birthday to ya, happy birthday, happy birthday to ya, happy And now, we'd like to acknowledge Bishop Williams Al Smith. If he could please join us. This is a special occasion. Pleased to join with you this week on Wednesday, February 7th, 2007, Bishop Williams Al Smith will celebrate his hundred-and-first birthday. And as is fitting for a man who's been on our great earth for a hundred years, he's received over a hundred awards and citations, both. It's a hundred and two. All right. Let's give him a second one. Wow. He's groomed and prepared ministers that are serving around the world. Approximately fifty of them are now pastoring in churches throughout the country. The city of Los Angeles has designated Wadsworth Avenue and 52nd Street Bishop William Lujan Smith Square. Bishop, has touched and inspired the lives for eighty-three years, from Montgomery to Chicago to Los Angeles, retired as a pastor in 1996, serves as the pastor emeritus, and continues to remain active in his church. He serves as a beacon light and a great inspiration to all. On behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we'd like to acknowledge your hundred-and-second birthday. I hope it says a hundred and second. It doesn't, but it will.
If you get a hundred, what difference does it make?
Here you go, sir. Do you like it?
You can't talk long. All right.
What you want me to say?
Just thank you. Thank you.
Thank you? Now, who am I thanking? Who am I thanking? Who am I addressing, thanking? I want to thank, I don't know who is listening.
Everybody.
Everybody listening. But I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to direct my thanks unto you this morning. Now, I am a hundred and two years old. And I am thankful to be in the land of the living. The Lord has been good to me, and I'm very thankful for that. And I'm thankful for the acceptance of this group this morning, to receive me as a guest member here in this audience. May the Lord bless you as well as me. And I'm very, very thankful. May the Lord bless you.
I want to give special recognition to our presenting sponsor, the Walt Disney Company. I don't have to tell you that when you think of Los Angeles, you think of Walt Disney. It, in many ways, has been a part of the fabric, the culture, a big reason why... a big reason why LA is the entertainment and cultural capital of the world. Please help me in welcoming Andrea Gibson.
On behalf of the Walt Disney Company, we're very excited to be the title sponsor for African American Heritage Month. We want to say congratulations to all the honorees, and we're honored to join you to celebrate the rich history and culture of the African American community. Diversity is very important to our company and to all the communities we serve. So we're happy to take part in recognizing all the contributions for African Americans throughout this great city of Los Angeles. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to celebrate with you.
Let me, on behalf of the city council and the entire city, present this to the Walt Disney Company for your efforts in making this month possible. A small token of our appreciation. And I'd like to briefly recognize a couple of people before we conclude and provide our council members with an opportunity to say a few words. Like to recognize a man that, I had the honor of opening up African American History Month with Pastor Murph at Brookings, and he gave a great a great sermon that day. It was supposed to be 10 minutes. And it was more like 11. But he was good, he was inspired, and we want to acknowledge him. Yesterday, I had the honor with Councilmember Parks to open up the Pan African Film and Arts Festival, a great tradition here in the city of Los Angeles, and the preeminent Pan African Film Festival in the United States of America. And there, I had the honor of introducing a man who was a US, well, no, no, let's start from the beginning. A man who led the civil rights movement. A man who went from Salma to Montgomery to every part in the South, across the nation and the world, preaching civil rights, human rights. A man who served in the Congress, as our representative ambassador to the United Nations, the great mayor of the city of Atlanta, the great ambassador, Andrew Young. Now, what I'm gonna tell you, for those of you who know politicians, you're gonna find it hard to believe. But during my campaign, I get a call from out of the blue. My name is Andrew Young. I want to support you. I'm here in town. I'd like to sit down with you. My schedule is obviously what it is today and on the campaign trail, so we didn't get to sit down till something like 10 o'clock at night for dinner. And he writes me a $1,000 check for my campaign. Now wait. No, no. Well, as soon as I got it, the first thing that comes to mind, I can't cash this. It's got his name on it. I gotta keep this. Now, of course, after some struggle, I decided to cash it. But I admit it was a lot of struggle. And the reason it was difficult was because, like we all know, Tom Bradley, Martin Luther King, Andrew Young, there were many others. But these were the people that opened up the door for all of us here today. That made that, as Judge Terry Hatter said so well, that made the contributions of African Americans not just contributions that affected and impacted the African American community, but America and the world as well. Please help me in welcoming Andrew Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me explain that. I think that I started running for Congress and after the civil rights movement in 1970. And I think one of the first fundraisers I had was here in Los Angeles. Clarence Avant brought a whole troupe, brought people to Atlanta to help me get elected. Henry Cisneros in San Antonio contributed to my campaigns. And once I got out of politics, I try, whenever I can afford to, to try to keep good politics going. And I think the relationship historically between the minorities. My involvement with Tom Bradley led us to get the Olympics. And we got involved with the Olympics because athletes on the way out here needed to get some time to get used to the heat. So we kept them in Atlanta for a month to prepare them for Los Angeles. And now I know you're bidding again for 2016.
Yes, we are.
And I got my button already.
Beautiful.
But because we learned from Los Angeles how to put on the Olympics, we put on our Olympics and raised $2.5 billion privately. Made sure that everybody got some of the action. Forty-two percent went to minority and previously disadvantaged contractors, female and minorities. And then, but we had almost $100 million left over. And I learned that really from Tom Bradley and Peter Ubroff. So I feel greatly indebted to Los Angeles, and I'm always honored when I can come out and say thank you. But also to work together with you on many of the things that we have in common. We still have a long, long way to go. We haven't solved the problems of the world, but the Pan African Film Festival reminds us, and I think we saw last night, that in spite of the fact that you, we celebrate Forest Whitaker, and we celebrate Hotel Rwanda, we celebrate Blood Diamonds as exposing a lot of the tragedy. We're grateful for all the work that's being done on HIV/AIDS in Africa. But that's not the whole story. And I think in the Pan African Film Festival, we see some of the positive stories. We see that there's a tremendous hope of peoples around the world in Africa, and that a lot of it is coming because of people who have come to be educated in this country and are going back home with skills and with money. And they are maybe our most successful ambassadors in spreading democracy around the world. So I'm grateful to Babu and the African American Pan African Film Festival for featuring a film that we were part of, which was Rwanda Rising. And it simply shows how the people of Rwanda have come together. They did a deal, I don't know whether we'd like, but nobody can win. The president says they don't like losers. And so 50% of the Constitution, no matter how many votes you get, you get 50% of the appointments. And 30% on each side have to be women. And they actually ended up with a government 48% female. And they're working together after the tragic genocide of 1994. And there are many positive things in Africa, and as you've attended this film festival, you began to see that Africa is still struggling. But we somehow managed to survive and thrive. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We're gonna, before we, as we bring up our, the unveiling of this year's cover of our calendar, let me acknowledge some of the people who are here today. Shaka Khan, Frida Payne, Jim Hill, Leslie Sykes, Macy Gray, Malverde, Maryam Ali, Robert Graham, Slash, Tina Marie, Tony Plama. Thank you all for being here. Garrett Morse. Okay, if we can bring up.
Mayor, no, we're gonna have some of the council members and our citywide officers speak. There's been a request after we're finished to take a group shot with the honorees. So before everyone heads out, just wanna give you a hug.
Can we bring the three honorees up too as well? By the way, great actor Keith David is here with us today. A member of the 10th District, I understand. The piece that we just unveiled is from Tony Gleaton called Black Girl, White Flower. Let's thank the Cultural Affairs Department, the sponsors, and the African American Heritage Month Committee for their work. Let's also give a round of applause to the calendar designer, Therese Harris. I encourage you to take part in all of the special events listed throughout the pages of the calendar. Thank you, and I hope you join us at the opening ceremonies. With that, I'd like to hand over the mic to Jan Perry, council member, who as you all know, is, represents the downtown area, but represents much more than that. Represents the great progress that is the Civil Rights Act, a great voice for her community. Jan Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate those kind words of introduction. This is such a special time here in the chamber, and to see a lady we've loved for a very long time, Mrs. Ethel Bradley, with both of her children here today. And Judge Hatter, you've served as a role model to so many of us as we've grown up, coming through universities here, not only locally but nationally, and to many, many lawyers. Just a role model beyond, beyond words. And Stevie, what can I say, you know, it's just to be in your presence, to bask in your light is a blessing, and thank you for that. And I suppose what I'd like to leave us with today is let this not be just one month. Celebrate our cultural institutions, our civic organizations, each and every day. Join the NAACP, join the Urban League, support the Pan African Film Festival, support the California African American Museum. Let's not just talk about it, let's do it, not in a word, and indeed. We must do that so that we can all survive. This is an American story and a story for all to share, but it is our responsibility to make sure that we carry it on. So thank you, and I think I'd also like to acknowledge our friends from all over the world, members of the Los Angeles Councilor Corps are in our audience today, and I want to say thank you to them as well. Our very, one of the newest members of the Councilor Corps, Council General Kodama from the country of Japan, joined us at Dr. Murph's church this past Sunday, and it's emblematic of the level of representation that the very active, dynamic Councilor Corps gives in the city of Los Angeles, meeting, networking, and reaching out to all communities. So thank you, and happy African American History Month.
Man who served city of Los Angeles for some 39 years, I think it is now, in the Los Angeles Police Department, working through the many barriers that existed for an African American in that police department, rose to be the chief of police, and is now a great council member representing the 8th District, Bernard Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Jan Perry, it's not 1,200 years, it's only 40 years. I appreciate the mayor taking such a personal interest in ensuring that this celebration for this month and this day represents the true fabric of the city of Los Angeles to bring forth these legends in the city council from Stevie Wonder, and which just recently his station was the cornerstone of helping to have one of the best MLK festivals after the parade. They are going to be in partnership with this today and in the future. To see Terry Hatter, a person that left the mayor's office, become a judge, has been a mainstay. When we talk about civil rights, human rights, that's Terry Hatter. You'd see his name in the dictionary right next to those words. And to the bishop that was here, 102 years old. Just lost my grandmother at 103 years old. It's something that you don't realize and appreciate, that someone not only could live that long, but have the history to share it with you during that period. And also, Ms. Bradley, we hope that what we did this week will be our gift to you as we work towards that heritage stamp, to honor you and your husband, Tom Bradley, to have a stamp in the future to where it will chronicle the life and the legacies that you left in the city of LA in the United States. And so I'd just like to thank everyone for being here. Again, as Jan Perry said, let's do this 365 days a year. It's about treating people properly, it's about giving people opportunities, and we will all benefit from that. Thank you.
Whenever I think about the next council member, I think about a man of great energy, great experience, a former speaker of the California State Assembly, a member of the city council, a great advocate for the 10th District, the district that gave us Tom Bradley. Help me in welcoming Councilmember Herb Wesson.
Thank you. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Madam President and members. I think that when the mayor said that my dear friend and colleague had 39 years experience in city government, that that deserves another round of applause. in city government, that that deserves another round of applause. Referring, referring to Chief Parks, it really amazes me, you know, because I'm only 39 years old. I want to say to, gracious thanks to the mayor. This is the way you start off an African-American History Month. I want to thank all of the members of the clergy that have come down today. All, I don't think I've ever seen the council chambers so loaded. I want to say that Ms. Bradley...
Phil, Phil.
Crowded.
Phil, Phil.
Crowded. Hey, I was born on the, I was born on the East Side. I want to say...
That's why we said Phil.
I want to say that it's tremendous, and to have individuals like Mr. Stevie Wonder, Ethel Bradley, who in a lot of our minds will be the first lady of this city forever. Judge Hatter, a class act. You will never hear anyone say anything negative about this man because he personifies class. And we're very proud of you. And to the other actors that are here today, and to a role model in Andrew Young, the mayor, the ambassador, the congressman, a dear friend of my mentor, supervisor Yvonne Burke, thank all of you for coming. Let this remind all of us that Los Angeles is the most diverse city on the planet, and that we have more in common than we have that, that separate us. So let's celebrate all those commonalities. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to be a part of this program. God bless all of us.
Thank you, Councilmember Wesson. Also with us is a man who has as his job enforce our ordinances and laws here in the city of Los Angeles, who were together yesterday addressing the gang crisis. He knows, as we all do, that it, we can't just prosecute our way out of this issue. We have to invest in people, we have to invest in prevention and intervention. Help me in welcoming the city attorney, Rocky Dalgetio.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Wesson. I did pay particular attention to the "loaded" comment. But you know what? I think it's appropriate, because I am intoxicated by the inspiration provided here today. Thank you so much to the African-American community in our city. I am so proud of how the African-American community defines Los Angeles, and our honorees today symbolize that. Mrs. Bradley, in the dictionary, right next to your picture would be grace. You define that for all of us. Judge Hatter, when he walks into a room, he defines justice, especially when he wears his robe. And Stevie Wonder, you define more than just music, you define how beautiful music makes us all feel. So it is an honor for me to be here today to congratulate how the African-American community gives us so much and defines that very notion of the city of angels. Thank you very much.
Also, a woman of many firsts, a woman who represents us and protects the public purse, but speaks for transparency in government and honesty in government, our city controller, Laura Chick.
Well, I'm going to be very brief, because just about every beautiful thing that could be said has been, but to the honorees, all of them have been special role models to me, each in the ways you've heard described Ethel Bradley. Nobody's talked about her fabulous garden that she kept and nurtured for this city, and Judge Hatter, and Stevie Wonder. As a U.S. history major at UCLA, and then a graduate year at UCLA in African history back in the 60s, it is a great pleasure to be here today, celebrating this wonderful and unique way that the city of Los Angeles honors our African-American heritage. And I am here as a Jewish woman, and the first woman elected to city controller, to pay my respects, to offer my appreciation, and to be part of this wonderful picture of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
With that, I want to thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Labange wanted to make a few comments, and then I think we'd like to take a photo.
Wonderful day it is, and I just want to say this is our 226th year as a city, and the 44 people who walked nine miles from the Mission San Gabriel to the banks of the Los Angeles River, 26 of the 44 were of African-American descent. So the roots are deep as a history person. And I second the motion of Judge Hatter for more civics, that was my best class after football. And I love Stevie Wonder, and I love Tom Bradley's family, Ms. Bradley, for what you, your husband did for the youth council when I was a youth, to be able to come here 33 years ago. And finally, I do want to recognize and shout out Jim Hill, because I know you had a great initiative this week, Mr. Mayor, about reaching out to young people who've lost their way. Jim Hill has done a great job of getting young people involved with our parks system and recreation, and to get the energies going the right direction. So I just want to say there's a couple more things we got to do and expand, to reach out to those young people who are going the wrong way, and then get them doing the right thing at our parks and recreation. Thank you, Jim Hill, for all you do for parks and recreation. And I like that. And lastly, I may say this beautiful musical group should be here every day, because I like them when I finish my speech, they play.
Thank you, and if, we'll take a brief recess and take a picture. Thank you.
We're gonna take a picture here. You gotta get a little rest.
I don't think you can.
I'm right behind you. Okay, one more, right here. Right here, look this way.
I'm good, I'm good, I'm good.
Ricky, go Ricky, we're gonna go up there.
Okay.
Okay, I'm in.
Okay, I think we're, we're coming out.
Okay, yeah, you will.
We're going to encourage everyone, if they can, if, going back to the press room, others to make your way, we're gonna acknowledge, in a moment, when we clear the chambers, Mr. Wesson for our next presentation. So if we could ask everyone to clear the chambers. We'd like to also let everyone know that the celebration is continuing on the South Lawn, for those who would like to join in the continuing of the African-American Heritage Month celebration on our South Lawn. We will get back to our other presentations momentarily, but if we could, anyone who was part of this presentation, ask them to move to the South Lawn so we can continue this morning. And maybe the guards can help us let everyone know that we're moving people for the next presentation.
Where are you, which one?
And it's awesome, okay. Uh, Miss, Madam President, if, if I might remind everyone that the celebration is taking place in the South Lawn, and we have performances going on, there's food, so I urge all of you that are interested to please go out on the lawn. First in Maine, I believe the Crenshaw High Choir is performing, so I urge everyone that has an interest to retire to the South Lawn.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. Again, if we could, ask everyone who's part of the presentation...
Other people will be honored as well.
That always works.
Again, thank you, Madam President and members. As we know, this has been a special day, but the day's not over yet. I have the honor to present to you a diplomat of all diplomats, an individual who has worked in Mexico, Belize, Hades, the Bahamas, and now we're fortunate enough to have him as the ambassador to the United States from Ghana. I would, I would like to ask Dr., I mean, no, I'm gonna call him Ambassador Kwame, because he and I had a special moment this morning when we toured an exhibit that is in the bridge of this building, where it, there are presentations of every African-American elected in the state of California, at the state house level, at the federal level, at the council level, at the school board level. And I thought that I was going to be giving him an informative tour, but every time we got to a neck, a new section of the display, the exhibit, he already knew the people that I was pointing out to him. At this juncture, what I would like to do is to present Ambassador Kwame with a certificate, welcoming him from the city of Los Angeles. And Mr. Ambassador, this is signed by every member of the Los Angeles City Council, plus the mayor of the great city. Welcome, we're glad that you're here. At this time, I'd like to ask the ambassador to say a few words.
Thank you so much, Councilman Wesson. Madam Chairperson, distinguished members of the Los Angeles City Council, I am honored and privileged to be addressing this august body as a representative of the government and people of Ghana, and I greatly appreciate this gesture, especially on the, on this Black, African-American Heritage Month. Los Angeles as a city, as a financial hub of the sixth-largest economy of the world, has a lot to share with Africa in terms of experience, business, partnership, and capacity building. Ghana, the black star of Africa, being the first black African country to be independent 50 years ago this year, and currently the chair of the African Union is ready for a partnership for mutual benefits. My visit is intended to explore the length and breadth of this symbiotic union, and I trust I can count on your support. The World Bank in 2006 declared Ghana as the best place in Africa to do business. The major investment areas are in real estate and tourism, mining, ICT outsourcing, agro-processing, human development, people-to-person. I hope Los Angeles will adopt a sister city in Ghana as part of the activities to mark our Jubilee celebration. And this year, we are also holding the Agua Forum in July 16 to 19. Then, as part of our contribution to the African-American heritage, we are having a Joseph Project at the end of July this year to the beginning of August. So we want all African-Americans to come home. I thank you all for this opportunity, and God bless you.
Thank you. And, and members, what I forgot to say is that our ambassador is also a medical doctor, a medical doctor. So let's give Dr. Kwame Adusee a round of applause. Thank you. Thank you all, thank you all so much.
Like to acknowledge Ms. Hahn for our next presentation. Thank you, Mr. Wesson, Ms. Hahn.
our jubilee celebration. And this year, we are also holding the Agua Forum in July 16 to 19. Then, as part of our contribution to the African American heritage, we are having a Joseph Project at the end of July this year to the beginning of August. So we want all African Americans to come home. I thank you all for this opportunity, and God bless you.
Thank you. And members, what I forgot to say is that our ambassador is also a medical doctor, a medical doctor. So let's give Doctor Kwame Aduse a round of applause. Thank you all, thank you all so much.
I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Han for our next presentation. Thank you, Mr. Weston, Ms. Han.
Well, as continuing our kickoff of African American Heritage Month and celebrating those in Los Angeles who have contributed so much to so many, I am pleased to celebrate someone who came from my council district, 15th Council District in Watts, and that's Charles Wright. Charles Wright and the Watts 103rd Street Band, celebrating 50 years in show business. And Mr. Wright was born in Mississippi and moved to Los Angeles when he was 12, and once there, he immediately fell in love with music. He started by playing the piano, then moving on to guitar, bass, and vocals. As a teenager, Charles led, sang, and wrote for a number of duo groups, including the Twilighters, the Shields, the Galahads. And Charles went on to work for Delphi Records. He produced another hit, Those Oldies But Goodies, for Little Caesar and the Romans, propelling him to become one of the most sought-after studio musicians. At the same time, he was becoming a nightclub sensation with his band, Charles Wright and the Wright Sounds. And in the mid-'60s, Charles Wright founded the history-making Watts 103rd Street Rhythm Band, the first successful rhythm and blues act for Warner Brothers. And they were signed by Seven Arts Records at the urging of the label's biggest black star at the time, Bill Cosby. And the Watts Band backed Cosby on his first music album, Silver Throat, Billy Cosby Sings. And with a total of nine albums, both with and without the Watts 103rd Street Band, Charles Wright gained popularity for several '60s and '70s hits, including the one we just all danced to, Express Yourself, also Do Your Thing, Love Land, Your Love, and 90 Day Cycle People. Additionally, Charles' music has been covered by great recording artists like Ray Charles, Les McCann, Della Reese, Mickey Dolan's, and Sean P. Diddy Combs. Finally, this past fall, Charles released Finally Got It Right. A new 16-song CD that surveys his music over the past three decades. And his, as you can imagine, his most famous and lucrative song, Express Yourself, which by the way, has been my personal theme song my whole life, has been used to sell Nike shoes, Red Lobster dinners, Rhodes Furniture, Gatorade, Hanes underwear, and Burger King Whoppers. And our own Los Angeles Lakers, they showcase Express Yourself at the startup of their games. And the NBA featured this soul classic in its 2004 I Love This Game television campaign. Kinko's uses Express Yourself in its international marketing strategy. Kohl's clothing stores chose Express Yourself for its spring fashion theme. Express Yourself also provided the theme for both the Democratic National Convention and the 2004 Olympic Games celebration. So having said all that, I'm so pleased to present Mr. Charles Wright with this resolution that reads, "Now therefore be it resolved that Charles Wright, musician, lyricist, producer, founder, and the leader of the Watts 103rd Street Rhythm Band, has dedicated his life to sharing good times, good grooves, and good messages, and hereby recognize his tremendous contributions as we celebrate African American Heritage Month 2007 here in the city of Los Angeles. Congratulations, Charles."
Hello.
Hello.
I'm, I guess I joined Roger Dangerfield, you know, with the, I get no respect. I came up here and I sit down there with everybody, I'm gonna be a normal cat, I'm Black History Month, I'm not gonna be that crazy, come and sit down. And then I saw Stevie Wonder and everybody, and the drummer comes, I said, I'm going with these, that's where I belong. Got up here and I got right here, and lined up, sit there, I said, I'm in! And you come a white lady with a big purse, pushed me right out of there. I'm still there with Target, no problem, I was just kidding, don't play me. But I, I remember a few years back, when a man from Rolling Stone Magazine, he wrote an article in about the 500 most popular songs in the world. And, you know, ironically, Express Yourself wasn't there. I don't know too many songs that's done over 35 movies, 17 television commercials, but yet it wasn't there. But that's all right. I remember a time when I walked down any street in Los Angeles, I walked down 36th Street, 78th Street, 130th Street, 16th Street, and I hear Ray Charles, Brooke Ben down in Washington, Jesse Bellman, Stevie Wonder, the Motown crew emulating our people's homes.
That's okay, keep talking.
Thank you very much.
We're giving you respect.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much, babe, okay. And the mother would be in there cooking, and all the children would be in there, and they'd be dancing and snapping their fingers to the music, because the music was real and it was genuine, and it was good. It wasn't only music for the kids here, and music for the grownups here, and the older folks here, it was like good music for everybody to listen to, and we all enjoyed it.
Right.
And the family was intact. But it seems like there's been a conspiracy to, you know, take us, force our children out into the street to join families, fictitious families, what they call gangs and pimps and hustlers. And we've got, come to a point with our music now that they talk, the music has no emotion. So without the emotion in the music, they have to say things to excite people to go and buy their records. So now, they talk about the women folk, they call their mothers and sisters and their ladies, whores, biaches, and all kind of names. And I'm just hoping that we can get back sometime in the very near future to music that is good for the soul and good for the
That's right.
for the community. You know, I remember, I'm sorry, I don't ever write my notes, but last night, something hit me and told me, write your notes, son, because you are gonna be speaking before all these very intelligent people, so. But if you ask me, I'd say let's get the music training back into the school system.
Yes, in the schools.
Teach the children how to read and play music from scratch, put the creative flow of the '40s, '50s, '60s, and '70s, and the first half of the '80s back into swing. Maybe, just maybe, if we get the music back on track, we'll eventually gain the ground beneath us and open up the floodgate and let the cream of the crop once again rise to the top. And maybe, we can overcome this doubtful void that we're presently suspended over, and maybe then, re-institute the beautiful planet with the blessed, that we're blessed to live in here, with love, joy, and for all mankind, and most of all, bring the rhythm and the harmony back to our neighborhoods.
No, I believe that.
Soulful music once again, excuse me, not just rehashed oldies, we even need new music to spark the imagination and spark human growth, and reinstall the pride and the confidence that we all so justly deserve back into our lives, that once again, we can all come to terms with the God that's within us. And maybe, we can get over this hump that we have where we have no emotion in the music anymore. Rhythm and blues music has been forced into the church, and it's only heard for three or four songs during the Sunday Mass anymore. I make rhythm and blues music and I'm proud of it, and I love it. I just recorded a new album, I'm not trying to sell the album to you, I didn't bring an album.
Go ahead, tell them.
I recorded a new, no, no, no. I recorded a new album with real, live musicians, and that's what I'm trying to bring back to the world today. Thank you. And before I go, I'd like to acknowledge, I've got some of the original Watts 103rd Street Band members here. Uh, Melvin Donlap, Joe Banks, I don't know, Al McKay, James Gasson is here, but I want to acknowledge my new members too, I have some new members here, G Mac, Michael Diego, Michael Harris. Thank y'all for coming, I love you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Colleagues, we will be going to our next presentation for CD 14, but in, while we're getting ready for that, I'd like to run through the agenda. Madam Clerk.
Cardenas Skrull, Han, Weezer Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal Smith, Vice Weston, Sign Garcetti, 11 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rosenthal moves, Ms. Perry seconds.
Mandatory resolutions for approval.
Those have been approved.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there was a request to continue item number eight, and the new date is February 23rd.
That will be continued to the 23rd.
Item number one on the regular agenda is an item notice for public hearing.
Anyone call that special? If not, that will be held over, is that correct, Ms.?
No, the council can vote on it, and it is an ordinance, so the ordinance will go over.
The Department came forth, it would like this to be sent back to committee, as committee chair, I have no objection.
Okay.
Just to resolve some minor things, so.
Item one will be sent back to committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items two through seven.
See, anyone like to have specials on items two through seven? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next item.
And the ordinance on item number two goes over one week.
Thank you.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items nine through 18, 10 votes are required for consideration, and you have cards on 11, 12, and 13. And I believe there is a substitute motion on 14.
Okay, any specials on that item? Has a substitute motion been distributed?
I haven't seen it yet.
Okay, we'll hold item 14 on the desk as well.
Yes, yes it has, I'm sorry.
Oh, it has, okay, it has been distributed.
And also a substitute for 15. I don't believe that's been distributed yet.
Okay, we will hold
It has been, oh, 16.
Okay, then the items before us, Madam Clerk.
That will leave 9, 10, and 14 has a substitute motion distributed, and 16's distributed, and 17 and 18.
Okay. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next items.
Madam President, do you wish to recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting?
Please.
Cardenas Skrull, Han, Weezer Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal Smith, Vice Weston, Sign Garcetti, and that's 11 members present. First item on the agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Then we'll take that item first. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Like that item to go forth with. Next items.
And Madam President, on item number 20, there's a request to continue that matter to Tuesday, and that's February 13th.
That will be continued till Tuesday, February 13th. Next items.
That concludes the special meeting.
Thank you, okay. We will adjourn the special meeting, or do we need to vote on the remaining items? Okay, we'll adjourn the special meeting?
That's it, yes.
Adjourn the special meeting, and we'll go back to our regular meeting and acknowledge Mr. Weezer for his presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and it's truly an honor to be here today with one of the greatest comics we've seen, and a great person overall. Very proud to recognize and acknowledge Mr. Garrett Morris as one of the new stakeholders. I'm here today to recognize him for his illustrious career and also to welcome him to CD 14. He's a visionary and someone who is doing great things to continue to bring great comedy to downtown Los Angeles. He is an illustrious alumni of Juilliard. His career has spanned from being a performer and arranger for Harry Belafonte, to of course, his infamous and beloved characters on Saturday Night Live. And for those of you with cable, it's not only Saturday Night Live anymore, it's every day. And in fact, as we started council today, presentations were made to the phenomenal members who are here recognized for the African American Heritage Month, and I think it's notable to mention that Garrett was not only, was not only part of the original Saturday Night Live cast, he was the first African American cast member on Saturday Night Live. He has also graced the stage of Broadway, as well as having appeared in a remarkable list of feature films. And today, we are here to honor him as well for being a visionary. When I first took office about a year ago, revitalizing the historic core of downtown Los Angeles was one of my priorities and continues to be one of my priorities. But obviously, the revitalization of this cannot take place with people who are willing to invest and to bring more resources to the area. One location that has seen some new activity is the Alexandria Hotel, a property that was in desperate need of attention. The property has been, in the past, difficult and controversial, but we have with us Ruben Isles of Ameriland, who came to my office, Ruben's who's here, thank you for your work, who has gone forward to restore the building, maintain affordability, and manage the health and safety of the residents and the surrounding community. And it hasn't been easy, but the transformation of the Alexandria Hotel is symbolic of the transformation of that neighborhood. And in comes Garrett Morris, along with Kevin Garnier, Mike Ferrara, who created the Downtown Comedy Club at the ground level of the Alexandria Hotel at the notorious Charlie O's Bar. The Downtown Comedy Club is the first and only comedy club in downtown Los Angeles. I invite all of you to visit. It's located at 501 South Spring Street inside the historic Hotel Alexandria, and the Downtown Comedy Club is at the heart of downtown L.A.'s famed Gallery Row. Garrett, realizing his vision, has helped set the first foundations for attracting entertainment back to the historic core of Los Angeles. And so with that, I want to present our great Garrett Morris and the Downtown Comedy Club. Not only one, people usually only get one certificate when they come, but you're getting two today. One for you, for all the achievements and for your great contributions, and also one to your Downtown Comedy Club in downtown historic core of the city of Los Angeles. Thank you so much, Garrett.
Share a few words?
Well, when I told friends of mine that this was gonna happen, I said, how should I, what should I do? How should I be? Should I be, you know, comical, profound, wise, witty? They said, be brief. Which I'm going to try to do, but I really, I would be, it would be a criminal for me to let you think that this idea really was all mine. It was not. My friend Kevin really is the really catalyst for this, and I really give him
My friend Kevin really is the really catalyst for this and I really give him a hand, please, because he's, and without the help of Senor Islas, mi hermano, Senor Islas, and Mark, you know, all these people behind me are part, and Mike, I'm sorry, did I say Mark? You know, I'm 70 now, so I have half Simons, not all of it yet. But look, I just want to say thank you very much. I've been in entertainment for most, all of my life and I consider that to be the reward, just to enjoy what I'm doing, you know, and nobody need giving me anything for it but that I should in fact have people who come to me practically every day telling me about positive experiences from what I've done. I think the Lord has blessed me wonderfully to be that lucky, but then on top of that, it goes into warp speed when in fact I'm in a city hall, you know, a poor boy from New Orleans from Georgetown at city hall getting, you know, being told that just because he's done what he's loved to do for 50 years, that somehow, you know, people are saying to you, blessing, 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 blessing. And, you know, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna stop now because you can see, I don't really know what to say. I feel so full, so full and so happy and thank you very, very much.
I'd like to, Mr. Wesson would like to say a few words. Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President and members. I want to thank Councilmember Weezer for bringing in an individual that I have always enjoyed. And I know we've had a long day, but I just wanted to rise to tell you that I love your work. I can look at you now and see you playing the Cuban baseball player and I have to rise when there's somebody here that's my size.
I would like to say that downtown has been very, very good to me.
I got it, yeah, thank you, thank you.
And furthermore, keep you eye on the ball.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Baseball has been very, very, very good to me too. Now, Garrett, I'm a week late and this is a surprise. It's his 70th birthday a week ago. Happy birthday, Garrett Morris. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Garrett. Happy birthday to you.
Everybody is a comedian.
Thank you so much, thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Parks for our next presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's ask Janice Han, Jan Perry, and Herb Wesson, could you come on up? We'd like to, we have two honorees today. As was stated earlier, as a major part of our Black History Month, the Pan-African Film Festival and Arts Festival has opened up as of yesterday. And it's been the longest-running and the largest film and arts festival of its type in America. One of the things that I found out last night, I was gonna do what we call a walk-through and say hello to everybody. And when Andrew Young introduced the movie, I said, I'll watch it a little while. And when it was over, you wish there was more. It was the most amazing film about Africa and the things that are going on that we've read about in the sense of Rwanda, the genocide, but to see people that are sitting there side by side on film, whose husbands and brothers and sisters were killed by family members who they're sitting right next to, and they found a way to coexist and not only coexist, but to prosper. And if anyone has a free moment, I would suggest you find a way to see that film. And the best part, Ambassador, was when you were sitting in the bush and the camera hit you on the head. I mean, the light, he was in a gorilla camp or something, but he walked what, an hour to get to this site, but it's the most amazing film and the photography and I'm just pleased that we have both of them here today. We put the ambassador to work earlier when he spoke, but when people accomplish so much, you really don't have to say a lot about them. And I'll just kind of go through, he's a reverend, he's an elected official, he's an ambassador, he's a father, he's a husband, he's an Olympian bringing the Olympics to Atlanta, he's now, and he's a writer, he's now a movie producer. But one of the things I found out a couple of years ago, he's also part of what I consider royalty. I was in Atlanta at the Trumpet Awards and it was such a beautiful event, as Anona Clayton put it on. But to stand in the lobby of the hotel and within a couple of feet, Andrew Young was standing here, Julian Bond was standing a little farther over, Mayor Jackson was within a couple of feet, Coretta Scott King was within a couple of feet, and the new mayor at that time, Shirley Franklin was standing, I mean, and to just stand there and see these people all communicating and being a part of a program, people you've read about, people that you've seen on television, it was the most remarkable experience that I had. And to see him each year, I know I'll see him at the Trumpet Awards each year, but to see him each year from that point and then to see him here today and last night with that movie, it just shows that it's a remarkable career that he has put forward. And I think that, we'll turn it over to my colleagues to speak, but I just had to start off first because of the inspiration that Mr. Young has given all of us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks and Mr. Ambassador and all my colleagues here. Again, it's a pleasure to speak again. I wanted to share this with Mr. Parks, especially since I know how he enjoys pronouncing very long last names, people from other countries. I had the pleasure of speaking to Mr. Rusesa Bagina, I said, Rusesa Bagina.
Yes, thank you.
Who was the man who wrote the book called Hotel Rwanda, upon which the movie was based. And he spoke for over two hours extemporaneously without notes and giving us, the audience, the most chilling portrait of human depravity and recovery and hope and optimism that I've ever heard in my life. And it is a story that needs to be told over and over again because, as we all know, if we don't understand our history, we will be doomed to repeat it. But I tell you again that it is a story of hope and optimism and recovery, as we've learned here today. And to the Pan-African Film Festival, and did he call your name out yet?
Babu.
Okay, he got it right, he got it right, okay.
Four letters.
That's right, it's only four letters. Yeah, if you go over two syllables, he starts to get a little crazy there. That, to all those listening and watching, remember to support this festival. This is our history, our culture, and an opportunity to share this with the rest of the city and the world. So come out, turn out, support, learn, share, reach back and look forward. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm very pleased to stand up here with my colleagues to honor both the Pan-African Film and Art Festival and Ambassador Young. And when you, when I look at how the Pan-African Film and Art Festival was established, it was dedicated to the promotion of cultural and racial tolerance and understanding. And I will tell you, I have a heavy heart as we start African-American Heritage Month. I have a heavy heart because I've seen some of the most vicious, violent racial intolerance happening in my own council district in Harbor Gateway. I attended the funeral of a 14-year-old, a 14-year-old black girl who was gunned down not for doing anything wrong, not for being out too late, it was 3 o'clock in the afternoon, standing there with her friends on a sidewalk where she was supposedly not allowed to be because of a gang. So I think we should renew our commitment today like we did when this festival was established. And maybe I could work to bring some of the young people from the Harbor Gateway neighborhood, both the Latinos and the African-Americans together, to come and view these films during this festival. I think that would be important. And Ambassador Young, it's a thrill to stand up here with you. Your work is so incredible, but for me personally, it was your closeness and your upfront and personal connection with Dr. King. And I am the daughter of Kenny Han and he sort of created his own black history in a lot of ways here in Los Angeles, but he was the only elected official that agreed to greet Dr. King when he first came to Los Angeles in the early 60s. Every other elected official was too busy, every other elected official was not there, found a reason to say no, because of course that was during the very, very tense times during the civil rights movement. My father, at the end of his life, said that there was no more important person than he that he got to spend time with than Dr. King. In fact, he got to spend two hours alone with Dr. King and was very inspired and very moved. So I know that for you to have gotten to be with Dr. King all those years and so close, I know you have those same wonderful memories and inspiration, so it's great to honor you here today too.
Just to kind of piggyback on something that Janice just said, Ambassador Young, whenever you would visit her father, who was a county supervisor for 40 years, in fact, Yvonne, your colleague and my mentor, took his place when he retired, whenever you would enter his conference room, he would always say, Martin Luther King sat in that chair. He would say it all the time. But it's, you know, again, an honor to be with you, to be close to someone that was with Dr. King, in fact, with Dr. King at the time of his death. But this Babu's idea, I can remember when we met 15 years ago. And trust me, in elected office, we hear all kinds of proposals, all kinds of suggestions, and all kinds of ideas. But when he came in with this vision, I sat mesmerized. So I feel proud to have seen this thing grow to the level that it is today. And also, Babu, I want to thank you for always being there for me and to let you know that I am honored to receive an honor from the Pan-African Film Festival tonight. And the last thing that I want to say is that last year at this time, Councilwoman Perry, Councilman Parks and I, we put together a film, a documentary, which was called A Legacy of Service. If someone wants to see it, it's at the, what do we call it, the overbridge or it's at the bridge on display with our exhibit. This documentary will be screened at the Pan-African Film Festival. It is the first city production to be, I guess, on exhibit or screened at this great festival. So we thank you for that and I look forward to tonight. I'm gonna go put my tux, do I have to wear a tuxedo, man?
It's California.
You're always handsome in that tuxedo.
Okay, so I don't have to wear a tuxedo, I'm gonna wear one anyway because it's clean. Thank you.
Mr. Rosenthal would like to say a few words. Oh, sorry, Mr. Parks first, then Mr. Rosenthal, sorry.
I would just like to, first of all, present the Ambassador a certificate from the City of LA, every elected official, and say thank you. We guarantee you, you can take it, you can take it on the carry-on on the plane. And so we just wanted to say thank you for being here. Thank you for the movie and we're gonna have you speak in a minute, we wanted to give you this first.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Rosenthal.
Just a quick shout-out to Ambassador Young. I was there in 1963 in those marches on Washington and your energy next to Dr. King is the energy of the real civil rights movement in the 60s that took place. You're a real hero of mine. Bless you for coming into our halls today.
Let me give this to Babu for the Pan-African Film Festival. We just look forward for the next several decades and as we promised you, the City of LA took somewhat of a sponsorship role, a little bit. We're just gonna keep working with that in the budget to make sure that you get a proper stipend for the city to keep this program going.
Very good.
Let me ask the Ambassador to come and speak and John, you're one of the stars of the movie.
I think you said what Babu and I needed to hear and that is that the city council is going to continue to support this cultural festival. We put a, once at, in fact, I think we had a $1 hotel motel tax that went specifically to arts and culture in our city. And I hope you, I'm sure you have something like that, but we find that the arts and this kind of cultural event is very good for the economic and cultural development of our cities and we follow you, so every now and then if we get something right, we want to pass it on to you. Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Let me just thank you, because John is one of the stars of the movie.
Yeah, John, one of the, this was a spur-of-the-moment thing and I was using, you know, money that I could scrape up and John Bryant happened to call and he always says, is there anything I can do for you with Operation Hope? And I said, yes, as a matter of fact, you can. I want to make a film on Rwanda. Is there anybody that you think could maybe make a contribution to our expenses so I could take a camera crew over there just to film what's going on in Africa? And John, in Operation Hope, has always been willing and able to come through. This is a Los Angeles organization that has gone nationwide and one of the reasons we're rushing away is that we have about 100 ministers waiting that are trying from Los Angeles. Many of you all came, families came from New Orleans. Nobody's done anything in New Orleans and John and some of these ministers and myself are trying, meeting at Bishop Blake's Church in West Angeles Church of God and Christ to try to find out how we can help people get back to New Orleans and restore that wonderful city, which is really and truly where a lot of this culture comes from. John, so I thank you for that, okay?
Let me just say what he won't say about himself. He's a quiet warrior. When he wasn't standing next to Martin Luther King's side, you wonder, where was he? Dr. King would send him to go meet with 100 business leaders while they were marching. He'd say, Andy, he called him Andy, go meet with 100 business leaders, because if you can get 100 business leaders to agree to anything, they'll convince the city government to come along with it. And so Martin Luther King would set it up and Andy Young would pay it off. But Andy was in the background, always doing the work. He was a quiet warrior. Well, we went to Rwanda and I deserve no credit. I will tell you what he won't tell you. That film cost $250,000 to make. He put his own money up, he wrote the check himself to make that film.
That's right. Let me bring Babu up, the originator of the Pan-African Film Festival, the person that has gone through the last that has gone through the last almost two decades, making sure that we, as the City of L.A., have this cultural experience. And let me ask him to make some comments.
I'd like to say thank you very much. First of all, the festival is a platform for people like Ambassador Young, who bring a more complex and sophisticated analysis of what's going on in the world. I urge everybody to come out and see this film. It's our pleasure to beg it possible, that's why we fight, people say, why do you come down and knock on the doors of City Hall? Because we want to present this kind of work by Ambassador Young and other people like that. I urge you to come out. We're here until the 19th of February. 150 movies, 100 major artists all over the world, Charles Bibbs is our featured artist. And I want to thank you, it's a pleasure to be here, and thank you very much. And this city reflects that. So thank you very much. Also, we have with us this morning one of the world's great directors. His name is Mr. Imwezi Nkongura, and he's from the Congo. His film is Peaceful Identity, and it won one of the major prizes in Africa, it's the best film in Africa produced a couple of years ago. And he's here with us. He's, his films have been in China, his films have been all over Africa, Europe. He's a world acclaimed artist, and the fact that you don't know who he is is in fact why we brought the Pan African Film Festival. Please come out and see his film, Peaceful Identity. It deals with Los Angeles, except it's changed locations. It's a story about one of the great Congo, Bakongo kings, which is Bakongo is a kingdom inside of the Congo, and the chief sent his daughter to study in Belgium, and she never came back. 20 years later, she's still in Belgium doing all kinds of things that folks come to L.A. to do. So the king gets up and decides to go to Belgium to find her. He also won the Best Actors Award in Africa there. So come out and see this. Mr. Imwezi Nkongura is here, wonderful, wonderful director. Some of my staff is here, Ms. Mosa Cooper. We have one of the artists who are here, Ms. Gail Jennings, who's, she is a master artist, and you'll see her work at the Baldwin and Crenshaw Plaza. So thank you very much.
What film has come in today at?
Yes. We are really excited about this evening. We're gonna be having, we call our night a tribute, and we're gonna be honoring Councilman Herb Wesson. He'll get a community award. We'll be honoring Mr. Imwezi Nkongura, The Africa Channel, which is a new channel that's going all over the world, will recognize him as a distinguished director. We also will bring Ms. King, she will get the Bill of Riches Award. We also will recognize Mr., the other, who's the other person that gets the, Blair Underwood? Blair Underwood. Also, we're gonna recognize Blair. He's gonna get a major award this evening. It's called the Canada Lee Award. And then last but not least, Mr. Sinclair Bowen, a major documentary filmmaker that made, direct, made PBS film on Langston Hughes, as well as the PBS film on Paul Robeson. They all will be at the Nate Holden Center for Performing Arts, thanks to Councilman Herb Wesson, who always steps up to the plate. Thanks to Councilman Bernard Parks, who always steps up to the plate. Thank you very much. They really get it right. Please listen to what the ambassador said.
Yeah, what about the girls' hair?
Yes, ma'am. Chauvinism, chauvinism, chauvinism. I apologize. These ladies have consistently, consistently been very serious about art and culture and politics, because it was all one. There's politics and culture, and we're trying to separate them, but it's all one thing. And thanks to Jan, and Janice, thank you so very much.
And Janice.
Yes, that's another major, major, major thing. We, one of our sponsors, the African Ancestry Project from Washington, D.C., and as you know, we've been scattered all over the world, we've been disconnected from Africa for many, many years, except through music and expression itself. But other than that, we're not really sure how, where we are, and how, what connections we have with the various ethnic groups on the continent. We now, thanks to technology, have that ability. And African Ancestry Project, we're gonna reveal where Councilman Herb Wesson comes from, where Blair Underwood comes from, we'll find out. Ambassador already has found out he's from Sierra Leone. So come out and find, and see this wonderful experience, and we've tried to reconnect, and thank you very much again. England.
Oh, you came from England?
I came from London.
Thank you very much. I'd like to now acknowledge Councilmember Ed Reyes for our next presentation.
Thank you, councilmembers. It's now good afternoon. It's been a great morning. We've been celebrating the richness of our city, and all its diversity, and in all its cultures. But this city can't function without the type of personnel that we have been blessed with when it comes to actually implementing our laws. And when you look at our source of discretion and how we influence the city directly, it's how we influence its environment, its built-out environment, how buildings are going to be structured, how they're gonna be built, and then who's going to enforce those laws. And we have a great Department of Building and Safety. Andrew Adelman, through his leadership and through the top management, have won awards for their abilities in making this a very efficient department. But today, I'm sad to say that we need to say goodbye to a person who I consider one of the pillars of our own Building and Safety Department. As of today, David R. Keim has completed 28 years of dedicated service to the city of Los Angeles. Let's give him a round of applause. David is joined by his lovely wife, his son?
Yes, his son Joshua.
Joshua. But behind him is the strength of the department, its personnel. David began his city and department, his city career, Department of Building and Safety, May of 1978, as an assistant inspector. Over the years, he's worked his way up through the system, where today he is Deputy Superintendent of Building One, a post which he has held since August of 1999. David's experience, patience, unbiased professionalism, and gracious demeanor has made him an excellent supervisor, mentor, manager, allowing him to develop a tremendous rapport with his fellow employees. And yes, David, they do love you. Over the years, David has racked up numerous letters of praise for the public, as well as having been named the Employee of the Year by the department back in 1997, Most Valuable Team Player Award for his work with Teamwork L.A. He served with the city's emergency operations organization, has spoken at various emergency training seminars and conferences in California, throughout the western United States and Canada, and teaching at the California Specialized Training Institute, of which he received numerous commendations. Over his career, he has worked with the March of Dimes campaign, other charities, and in 2004, worked tirelessly to prevent the displacement of over 100 families in 2004. For me, colleagues, David has been one of those soft-spoken gentlemen that will come to your office and say, Councilman, these are your choices. This is the history. This is what has happened in the past, this is what could be done in the future. On the issue of billboards, he's been very tenacious in trying to make sure that we create a balanced environment, understanding our legal restrictions. But in many ways, his skill to deal with these very personal touches has made him very effective in dealing with this arena. We talk about the eagles of the property owners, elected officials, the developers, and achieving a balance that's healthy for all of us. So David, we're gonna miss you. I do want to take a moment to thank your wife and your son for lending us your presence, your time, and the time they lost with you as a family, because you've been nurturing a greater family in Building and Safety. But again, we're always going to be here for you. And as Mr. Zein said in his little clip, all you have to do from now, from here on out, is wake up and collect that check. So with that, Mr. David Keim, please step up. On behalf of the council, the mayor, and all the citywide officials, our city attorney Rocky DeGordio, Laura Cheka-Cent, our city controller, congratulations, and we'll miss you.
Thank you so much.
And before David speaks, we do have a few councilmembers that would like to say a few words.
I'd like to ask Mr. Adelman for a few words.
Sure.
Thank you, councilmembers. I am joined by many of the Building and Safety employees to celebrate David Keim's nearly 30 years of service here with the department. David Keim was one of the first promotions that I made to the management level in the department, and he has done a great job as the chief of the Code Enforcement Bureau for the last nine-plus years. He has been a dedicated, hard-working, and excellent employee, truly a role model employee. But I want to thank somebody else, and that is Judy, because Judy, so many times, David's wife, so many times when I call at 11 o'clock at night, or 5:30 in the morning, in the mountains when you were in the cabin, you didn't hang up on me and you put David on the phone. I thank you for that. David, we all miss you. You're a great guy.
Mr. Smith, followed by Mr. Labunch.
Thank you, Madam President. Dave, I just got a memo here from Personnel, it says 28 years is not enough, your papers are denied, you have two more years to go, so. You know, I'd be the last person to say, you can't leave. I wish you wouldn't. You know, over the years, I think one of the things I heard, I just heard Aaron from Mr. Rosendahl's office saying, oh, Dave's leaving, I love Dave. I think that's something that'd be very universal around all these horseshoe, around all the people here. All of us, whoever had to deal with you, whether as a council member, me, as a council staff, Dave Keim was a guy, when you went to the department, he would come, and as Mr. Reyes says, he'd sit down and explain to you what your options were, where we could go, what the history was, and really present it to you on an option base. And when you went to committee, and sometimes those committees got kind of rough, you were the face of the department, and you sat there like a gentleman with that same smile you've got right now, and you took it like a gentleman, and then you said, here's what the options are, here's why we're at, and you never, ever lashed out at anybody. You were a true gentleman, in the old way of the definition of gentleman. And that's probably a tribute why so many people are not doing their job today, or came down instead to say goodbye to you, because you're a real gentleman, and it's been a pleasure to work with you. And I am very much like Aaron, I love that guy. I'm sorry to see you go, but you're great to work with. All the years I was here, you've put a great face on the department, and we're really gonna miss you, because you're a pleasure to work with. God bless you, and good luck in your retirement.
Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Labunch.
I rise to salute Dave. Turn around, turn around and look at all those people here, your coworkers, what a great, and they stayed all this time, Dave. That's a credit to you, to stand with you. And Mr. Reyes, thank you for what you said, too, and about how important the Building and Safety Department is. And as Mr. Smith said, when we were staffers, you always were there to help us. When I look at you, you're the last connection, almost, to John Felicello, you know, who was a great representative for Building and Safety. We miss you in City Hall here. We're glad you have a great spot over there for every, the public, to come up on Figaro Street. But David, what you've done in the community and tried to do, tried to strengthen the response from the city attorney's office, to make sure that people get action, was so important, because there's always that balance that we try to do in this world of building. Never, never the loss when it's an issue of safety, but to try to deal with those issues is so important. So I just want to personally thank you and say how nice it is, and as many times as Mr. Reyes will tell you, when people are honored, that's a whole lot of strength behind it, says they love Dave Keim as we do and I do personally. Thank you, my staff thanks you.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise and say personally how much I appreciated your incredible work for me, particularly in my community of Wilmington. And when I was elected in 2001, I inherited the port of Los Angeles, which, you know, is the largest port complex in the country, and the fourth-largest in the world. But what I also inherited was industrial uses encroaching on a community of Wilmington. And we had containers that were stacked so high that they used to say the sun sat an hour earlier in parts of Wilmington. We had kids having to walk past stacks and stacks of these empty containers. It was, it was an incredible blight. We had a fourth of all the junkyards in the city were located in Wilmington. And Sergio Correa, who is here today, who grew up in Wilmington and worked for me, I know, worked very hard with you, so that we could finally remove those kinds of uses from a community that no other community in Los Angeles would have had to deal with. And you helped write what I think was a historic ordinance that now, forever, will ban all new container storage facilities in the community of Wilmington, and not allow any more junkyards to be located in Wilmington. For that, I thank you, but more importantly, the people of Wilmington, thank you from the bottom of their heart for caring so much about that community and using your expertise to make that happen. So thank you for the quality of life, which has been forever improved because of your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, and I just want to also extend my congratulations and a big thank you, my short time in council and my service on Plum. You've been very helpful and thoughtful and methodical as you approached the many issues on Plum, so I want to thank you for the support you've been, not only to my office, but to the city of Los Angeles. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Rosendahl.
First of all, you're a class act. Everybody knows that, and the people surrounding you give you that complete endorsement. I know the period of transition when Dick Reardon came in and started saying, we want to streamline things, we want to get things going, we want to make things more effective, that the biggest challenge is to get everybody in the family to buy into a coordinated effort. So your skills of working with other members of the department and moving it in the right direction is greatly appreciated. Also, just your general attitude of how you interact with people is noticed by me. I've only been around 20 months. But the final point is, when you put the options out there, we elected officials are only as good as the staff giving us input and insight into things. We're doing the best we can, but if the staff gives us those options and we can work through it as policymakers, then we're doing our job. So I want to thank you and everybody in the room here that are standing with you for creating those options for us elected, so we can do our job. Bless you, thank you, good luck in your retirement.
Thank you. And before David speaks, I just want to add my word of thanks. When I heard about David's retirement, I did call him, Andrew, and try to convince him otherwise. You did the same. My staff, who has worked so closely with David, I have been able to call him noon, midnight, morning, whatever it was, and he usually picked up the phone. If he didn't, within five minutes, I had a call back from David Keim, because he cared about the job. He cared about what he was doing, and it wasn't just a job for him or just a career, it was really his life's commitment, and I want to thank you. And I did jokingly, I don't know if you've seen the video yet, but there was a particular one in my district where we had an adult location, I'll call it, that had lights that were, everyone could see in the whole neighborhood, and David did a site visit with my staff. As my staff member said, I didn't look at anything. I promise, I went in, but I didn't look. But hopefully, I'm making him blush, look at that. But David, really, you are a can-do person, respectful, I think Bill Rosendahl said it best, a class act, and your shoes will be very difficult to fill. And I know that it wasn't only you, but your staff who respected you and worked hard for you, because you're one person, but you were a true leader in that department. And so we're very sad to see you go. If there's anything we could do to convince you, you'll let us know to come back in the city of Los Angeles, but congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you very much.
David.
Thank you, councilmembers. Before Mr. Keim speaks, I'd like to introduce Ms. Burton, Emergency Preparators. Before Mr. Keim speaks, I'd like to introduce Ms. Burton, Emergency Preparators Department.
Yes, thank you. It's my honor on behalf of the Emergency Operations Board that we thank Dave for really his career and his dedication. It's been 14 years since the Northridge earthquake, and Dave, I think personally, was instrumental in going out and making sure that the city was able to recover and the residents. I would believe there's probably thousands of individuals throughout the city that would recognize Dave Keim just for his dedication, for his personal one-on-one assistance to those individuals, going there and making sure that they were comfortable and they received the help they needed. So on behalf of the board and all the residents that were impacted by Dave throughout his career, I'd like to, to thank him with a certificate from the board.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Well, good afternoon, council members, Madam President. I have to say, Steve Younder's a pretty hard act to follow, but I'll do my best here.
You see.
I want to, I want to start off, I'm sorry. I want to start off by talking a little bit, just real briefly, about your Department of Building and Safety. We all here in the chambers, as well as all the residents of LA, go to work every morning into buildings, and we go home into our homes and apartments at nighttime. And the last thing we think about is whether or not that building is safe. You don't have to think about whether or not the building is safe because the people behind me are the ones that ensure that you don't have to give it a second thought. It's their very work they do every day. It's been, I've been very, very honored and proud to be a member of the greatest building department in the world. And I want to thank you all today for this recognition. I've heard a lot of love here, and love comes back. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
I'd now like to acknowledge Ms. Hahn for our next presentation.
Well, thank everyone, first of all, for being so patient this morning. We've had a long morning, a lot of presentations. But I am really pleased today to present to you 44 Rotarians that are visiting Los Angeles from Mexico. And these clubs are being hosted by the Rotary Club of Wilmington under the wonderful leadership of the President, Esther Espinoza Eck. And, you know, Rotary is really the world's oldest and largest service organization of business and professional leaders that provide humanitarian service, encourages high ethical standard in all vocations, and helps build goodwill and peace in the world. Approximately 1.2 million Rotarians belong to more than 32,000 clubs in more than 200 countries and geographical areas. The three clubs here arrived from Mexico yesterday and are staying through Monday. And they have a lot of things planned. I know they were at the cathedral this morning. But one of the reasons they're here is that they're joining the Wilmington Rotary as they begin a campaign under the leadership of President-elect Sherry Lopez for diabetes awareness in the Wilmington community. And the Rotary Club of Wilmington's first annual Winter Fest Dinner Dance to benefit diabetes awareness and education will be held Saturday night, 6 o'clock, at Fanning's Landing in Wilmington. The Wilmington Rotary sent delegations to visit all three of these clubs last September and November. I was invited but couldn't go, but next time.
Next time.
And while there, the Wilmington Rotarians assisted with buying and stocking an ambulance, building a senior citizen home for those people who are destitute and have no families, bringing potable water to isolated rural communities, building a greenhouse to provide jobs and create a sustainable community, building a rehab center, and helping to give a seven-year-old girl the gift of hearing. I want to introduce the wonderful President, Esther Eck, who will tell us a little bit more about this relationship with these clubs from Mexico and introduce us to these Rotaries, as well as some dignitaries that we have visiting us. Esther.
Good afternoon, Madam President, council members. I just want to say, first of all, thank you very much for the warm welcome here to LA, to our fellow Rotarians. Actually, they're sister Rotarian clubs. And especially, we'd like to extend our appreciation to Councilmember Janice Hahn. She's just been just so great, just making everything so pleasant and comfortable, just facilitating breakfast, tours. I mean, we love her. We just really want to say thank you to her. But I'd like to introduce the Presidents of the three clubs. First of all, I have the President of Islan is Luis Alberto Flores Becerra, por favor.
I want to present you with this. Welcome, welcome.
The second is from Rotary from Morel Leon, and is Miguel Savala. Miguel, por favor.
Congratulations. Welcome. So glad you're here.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
The third is from Yuridia, Dr. Juan Alberto Gutierrez Villegas.
Welcome officially. I'm so glad you're here. So glad you're here.
Among the Rotarians, we have some dignitaries. We have the Mayor of Morel Leon, Rafael Samudio.
Rafael. Oh, gosh. I don't even want to say that. Welcome.
We also have a council member from Morel Leon, Letizia Orozco. And we also have from Yuridia, no, from, sorry, from Islan, Mr. Juan Jose Gonzalez Rivera, another council member.
Do you want to let the mayor say anything? Welcome, welcome.
We also like to thank everybody. We would like to have the mayor just say a couple of words if we, if he can.
Yes. You want to say something?
And Ms. Hahn, before, we do have three council members that would like to speak. Maybe we can hold off on the mayor for just one moment. Councilmember Labonge, Weisar, and Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Labonge.
Ben, help me. Bienvenidos. Okay. And it's great to have you here, and so important what Rotary Club does. It just helps people. That's what it's all about. And I think all day, a long program today, but whether we were honoring a city official or celebrating African-American History Month, it's all about helping people. And I just wanted to stand for the Rotary and hope, Ms. Eck, that you take them to the tower. Have you taken them to the top?
I've tried.
You don't try. You got to take them to the top. So you really see the breadth of this city. And if you get on your tiptoes, you could see Wilmington.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Weisar.
Thank you. Bienvenidos otra vez. And it's a great pleasure to be here, to honor you, and thank you, Ms. Hahn, for bringing this to our attention. I think it's wonderful when we see, when we're making connections with service organizations that are international on both sides of the border, doing some good for our communities and here especially, on a very important issue, which is diabetes. We all know that we're facing a tremendous problem and challenge here with diabetes, and I'm sure if we continue to work on both sides of the border, we will address that issue. Les quiero decir bienvenidos. Me da un placer tenerlos hoy aquí ustedes. Yo también soy su paisano. Nací en Zacatecas, México. Y estoy muy orgulloso de tenerlos aquí, tener mis paisanos aquí especialmente. Gracias. Especialmente que estamos trabajando juntos los dos lados de la frontera en algo muy importante como diabetes. Sabemos que ese problema es algo que esta nación, en los Estados Unidos y en México, es un problema tremendo, y trabajando junto a eso vamos a resolver el problema que tenemos, especialmente con nuestros niños, los jóvenes que van a tener mucho problema con la obesidad en dos lados, dos lados de la frontera. Bienvenidos. Mucho gusto conocerlos y adelante juntos. Gracias.
Thank you, Jose. Ms. Rosendahl.
Just a quick word. I was a junior Rotarian when I was in high school, and the Rotary Club is a connection of all people on the planet. And it does community work. It gets engaged in every social and political issue in communities with a positive spirit. Start the meetings off with a laugh or a cheer and have a song or two, but actually people who care about community. And Ms. Hahn, I admire you so much for bringing together the Rotary Clubs across the border because, let's face it, Mexico and California, we're a family here, and we need to respect and treat each other as a family, and the Rotary Club does that. Bless you all. Thank you very much.
Mr. Reyes.
It just gives me great pride and pleasure to hear the language that half of the population here in Southern California speaks. To hear it here in the chambers for such a noble cause truly speaks to how we can continue to mature and grow as a society that we do reflect an international setting. So gracias por todo lo que han hecho, mucho orgullo oír español aquí en este edificio para mejorar nuestra sociedad como ustedes están haciendo. Muchas gracias y bienvenidos y felicidades. Gracias.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, would you like to say a few words?
El desconocer los cimientos sobre los cuales se ha construido el edificio del conocimiento de la libertad y de la dignidad humana es hasta cierto punto mantenerse al margen de la vida. Buenas tardes a todos y a todas ustedes. Me da mucho gusto. I'm very happy. Me da mucho gusto estar aquí con ustedes. I'm very happy to be here with all of you. El hecho de que tengan ustedes un gran país. The fact that you all have a great country. Un gran estado. A great state. Una gran ciudad. A great city. Eso no es producto de la casualidad. That's not a matter of coincidence. Eso es producto de gente grande como ustedes. That's, as a result, a product of great people as yourselves. En verdad agradezco que nos permitan entablar este puente de comunicación con todos y con todas ustedes. I truly appreciate you giving us the opportunity to establish this bridge of communication with all you ladies and gentlemen. Agradezco al Club Rotario que haya sido este vínculo. La verdad de que. I truly appreciate the Rotary Club for having allowed this gap to be bridged. Ya desde hace rato me han convencido del ambiente que se respira en el Club Rotario. Since I was convinced sometime ago about the environment that is breathed in the Rotary Club. Donde dejan sentir algo mucho muy valioso. Where one is allowed to feel something that's very valuable. Que es la solidaridad. And that is solidarity. Que es la disposición y las ganas de servir. And that's the willingness and desire to serve. Pero aquí en aquella gente que por las circunstancias de la vida no ha tenido la suerte que nosotros tenemos. But to hear about certain peoples who have not had the fortune that we've been blessed to have. Y es que para servir no debe de haber fronteras. And in order to serve, we shouldn't have frontiers. They should not exist. Agradezco también a su concejal. I'm also very appreciative to your councilwoman. Jenice. Que por cierto qué bonitos ojos tiene. As a matter of fact, she's got beautiful eyes. Ella se está poniendo un poquito vergonzosa. Está poniendo roja. La verdad, este, no es nada más el rostro femenino. The truth is not just the female face. Si no ese gran corazón que tiene. It's a great heart that she has. Al igual que ustedes, nosotros en nuestro municipio. Equally as what you're doing in our municipality. Tenemos un ayuntamiento plural. We have a plural city hall. Integrado por las distintas fracciones políticas. It's integrated by all the different party representatives. Pero también al 50% de hombres y 50% de mujeres. Which also consists of 50% male and 50% female. Eso es mucho muy importante porque se deja ver la pluralidad. And that is very important because that allows the transparency of plural. Y se valora a la mujer. And women are valued. Que hoy por hoy nos viene marcando el paso. That in today's time, it's marking a course. Y no tengo la menor de las dudas que en un futuro no muy lejano. And I don't have the slightest doubt that in the very near future. Vamos a tener una gobernadora de este estado. Who will have a female governor in this state. Hace un rato estaba escuchando por aquí lo que se refiere al reconocimiento de esa gran labor que se viene haciendo en este país. Not long ago, I was listening to the recognitions about the great work that has been accomplished in this nation. A la ratificación de la libertad. About the ratification of liberty. Y el reconocimiento a esa gran labor que han venido desempeñando muchos de los aquí presentes. And to the recognition of what a lot of the people that have been present here have been accomplishing and have accomplished. Y es que debemos de considerar la libertad como el conocimiento de nuestras necesidades. And we have to recognize that freedom is the knowledge of our needs. Y como la satisfacción de las mismas. And the satisfaction of the same. Y el hecho de que ustedes abran tribuna. And the fact that you open your chambers. Para que se manifieste la gente. So the people can manifest themselves. Eso demuestra de que aquí hay libertad. That shows that freedom does exist here. Pero no solamente para escuchar, sino para reconocer. But not only to listen, but also to recognize. Y manifestar de una forma que el escuchar se va a convertir en realidad. And the manifestation that when you're listening, that will turn into a reality. Les agradezco su gentileza. I truly appreciate your kindness. Y tienen ustedes una mano amiga en Morel Leon. And you have a friendly hand in Morel Leon, Juana Huato. Mexico. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much. Muy amables. Very kind.
Wow.
The one thing I learned in life, the best speech is the choice. Thank you. That's all. And I brought you a present that used to say thank to all of you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. I'd like to now acknowledge Mr. Labonge for our next presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Okay. With your permission, Señor President, and Señores Concejales, we would like to thank you for your hospitality and your facilitation that we were able to have this opportunity. The Rotarismo is a great organization. El rotarismo es una herramienta que nos ha servido para ayudar a las clases más necesitadas y nosotros estamos aquí tomando nuevas herramientas, nuevas formas, nuevos compromisos para ser extensivas este apoyo que ustedes nos dan y que ustedes hacen llegar a nuestras comunidades a través de los Clubes Rotarios. Gracias por su hospitalidad, gracias por su hermandad, gracias de parte de todas nuestras comunidades, en especial gracias a nuestras autoridades federales, las autoridades de ustedes y en especial para Jeannis Han que hizo posible también el apoyo para poder estar aquí. Gracias.
California, todo el trabajo que ha hecho junto con nosotros en Estland del Río Nayarit, la casa de todos ustedes, por aquella gente que se ha podido ayudar, esos proyectos que hemos emprendido y que ellos nos han apoyado de una forma muy entusiasta, queremos agradecerlo y decirles que también nosotros quisieramos poder tenerlos allá con todos ustedes y agradecer este reconocimiento en este recinto tan importante. Muchas gracias que Estland tiene en su casa.
Thank you very much and you have a home in Estland.
Councilmember, councilmember, absolutely, and a woman.
Right, here we are. Well, I just want to say thank you and to thank the Rotarians for having invited us and thank the city of Los Angeles for such a warm homecoming. It's great, it's a beautiful city and it all, it belongs to all of us. Take care of it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labanche.
Members of council, this is the last presentation this afternoon, but it's a special one for someone for 35 years who's served the city of Los Angeles. Please give a big hand to Robert Jensen. Robert Bob Jensen was born in Chicago at St. Elizabeth's Hospital in March 22nd, 1947. Grew up in Chicago and graduated from Lane Tech, one of Chicago's largest high schools, and he moved to Southern California and began his career with the city in 1972. Prior to that, he was a great member of the United States Navy and had two tours in Vietnam. In July of 75, he began to work for the Department of Public Works and was promoted all the way up in various roles and did a great job and always led people, always motivated people, always made people believe in their work. Through various promotions, he transferred from the Police Department to Personnel Department as well as our own General Services where in General Services he's really excelled where under the leadership of then General Manager John McCreary, Bob was given a task to improve systems within General Services and he certainly did, saving the city over 400, excuse me, $45 million, which is to be applauded. That's right there, I meant alone. But more than anything else, Bob is a great guy. He truly is very helpful to ourselves as council members, but to our staffs in getting things done in the Park Service. And he has such a great demeanor, he's truly going to be missed, but the great thing about life is if you could turn the page and have different chapters. And I know earlier when we heard from Dave Keim and we were sad to see him leave, I know it's okay because he did great service and this is what it's all about, Bob, to do that, to have great service and then to be able to turn a chapter and retire. So I'm pleased on behalf of Mayor Villarosa and all of the city of Los Angeles, our council, full city council, our city comptroller and city attorney, attested by our very own city clerk, this full resolution with a great seal of the city of Los Angeles to salute you for your 35 years of service. Bob Jensen, you're very special. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Labanche, would you like to have the general manager say a few words?
I sure will. Before Bob speaks, we're going to do that, excuse me, Bob, thank you. John McCreary, the keeper of the parks for the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Labanche, thank you, Madam President. You know, it's a, it's a happy day for Bob, but it's a sad day for me. I came to the city in 1995 when I retired from the military, met a lot of people the first week, the second week I met Bob. And when I met Bob, we had kind of a discussion on improvements that we could make in the city. Bob looked at me with crossed eyes, said he heard it all before, but I instantaneously fell in love with Bob Jensen. His interest, his drive, his ability just to see through issues and come to conclusion. I'm not going to waste a lot of time because I want to hear from Bob, but I'm telling you, I want the citizens of LA to know the city works as well as it does because of the Bob Jensen's. There's tens of thousands of employees in the city, Bob epitomizes the best. He's there day in and day out, he's there Saturdays, Sundays. I lied to him to come to Wreckin Parks and work for me. I told him it was a walk in the park and golf courses every day. I don't think you played a round of golf in two years, but Bob, you've made a huge difference at General Services, you've made a huge difference at Wreckin Parks, but more than that, you're, you're a good friend and you made a huge difference in my life, thank you. Thank you, John.
Bob, before you speak, I just want to add my two cents. You've been a great asset to the city and another one, just like we said to Dave Keim, we, I think John tried to convince you not to leave, but you have made a, a, a big difference in the city of Los Angeles to many of our young people and others and your dedication to Recreation and Parks, so you'll be sorely missed by many of us.
Thank you very much. And Madam President, I want to ask Liz Diaz, the deputy mayor of Recreation and Parks, I like to say that for Mayor Villarosa for you remark.
I just got promoted. Now, actually on behalf of the mayor, it's just been a real pleasure. I get the, the joy of working directly with this department and it, and it is that, it's a joy to work with all of the staff and in particular with, with Bob. He's always been there when we have concerns, I know that he'll respond and so he'll be sorely missed, but we wish you all the good luck and enjoy your retirement. Thank you for your service.
Mr. Bob Jensen.
Thank you, Tom. This is a wonderful day in my life. I finally have the opportunity to wake up tomorrow morning and do anything I want with my life. It's been a real honor and a privilege to work for the city of Los Angeles for 35 years. I don't think I ever had a bad day. People like John McCreary and others have given me an opportunity to do a lot of fine things and I certainly do appreciate that opportunity and I've enjoyed my entire career. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob, we thank you and all this staff of Recreation and Parks, Madam President, members of council, Mr. Robert Jensen.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, I'd like to go to items 11, 12, and 13. We have Zuma Dog in the Valley. We're going to combine those, Mr. Zuma Dog.
Oh yes, thank you so much.
We will be doing comment as well.
Yes, yes, we'll do public comment after, I'd like to remind everybody. So yes, that's a good idea to combine all these because this meeting ran longer, my hash brownies running out. 10 is for Annette Benning Hollywood Walk of Fame. All right, that sounds good. Eric Garcetti will be happy, he loves to hop up with the goober schmoochers. Warren Beatty got one. Now, let's give one to Annette Benning. Number 11, here's what I want to know, David Gerber Hollywood Walk of Fame, excuse me, can somebody please contact Zuma Dog, tell him who David Gerber is? I understand he's a star who needs one on the Walk of Fame, but I think if nobody heard of him, then he don't deserve that. So just vote no for that David Gerber Walk of Fame because you diminish the luster and integrity of the boardwalk when you approve people who nobody's ever heard of, y'all. Also, we got Hillary Swank coming up on that Walk of Fame, yeah, yeah. Zuma Dog might have to make an appearance at the induction of Hillary Swank Walk of Fame because she's single now, y'all, and Zuma Dog's going to be showing up to make her feel so much ecstasy at her Hollywood Walk of Fame induction ceremony. It's going to be unbelievable, y'all, yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll in 11, 12, and 13. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. 11 eyes, those items have been approved. We will now go to public comment. I will call up three names or four names at a time, Bilal Ali, Debbie Burton, Greg Senegal, and Mark Casanova. Thank you.
Good morning, remaining council members.
On your watch.
My name is Bilal Ali, I'm with the Los Angeles Community Action Network and we're here today to basically in response to your constant refusal to hear the folks that live in the Central City East area. We're here because your constant refusal to see the real underlying problems that plague that community and we're here in response, your refusal to hear us. So we're here in response for your failure to speak out, to hear us, which renders you all deaf, dumb, and blind. And we're here to serve notice on you that if you're not holding the LAPD accountable, yourselves accountable, that the people will definitely hold you accountable as you witnessed outside in the hall today. And the words of esteemed Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger, we will be back. All power to the people.
Ms. Debbie Burton.
Good afternoon, council members. The city, in conclusion with the district attorney, has created a separate and unequal criminal justice system for the downtown residents. Punishment is being determined by the type, not by the type of, not by the type of severity of the crime, but instead solely by the neighborhood from which the crime was took place, resulting in unequal protection under the law and questionable right to due process. My name is Deborah Burton and I am a resident in the downtown community. I have lived downtown for four years and never felt unsafe until your Safer Cities Initiative.
Greg Senegal, followed by Mark Casanova, followed by Steve Diaz, and Levita Marbury.
Greg's not here. Good morning, council members. The city has led the effort to transfer the responsibility and costs of treating disease and addiction to the overcrowded prison system. My name's Mark Casanova, I'm the executive director with Homeless Healthcare Los Angeles. Our staff, our board, and most importantly, our clients are outraged at what's going on in Skid Row because of the Safer Cities Initiative. We wonder at what cost does this safer city come? For homeless healthcare, we've had a reduction of 26% of the number of folks who are receiving our critical services out of our Skid Row site and whether they're one of the 4,800 that's been arrested or they're, they've relocated out of the area, it's clear that one in four are no longer receiving critical life-saving services. At what cost does this happen? As a community, are we willing to accept increased rates of HIV, hepatitis C virus, and other bloodborne infections among drug users in Skid Row? Are we willing to increase the drug-related deaths because folks can't access crucial services? We're not willing to accept these costs. A reevaluation of the current policy is needed and an initiative that emphasizes comprehensive care and drug treatment is sure to yield more favorable results. Homeless Healthcare Los Angeles believes that a safer city is not one that punishes its most vulnerable citizens, but one that emphasizes the humane and just treatment of all its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Senegal, Steve Diaz, Levita Marbury.
Good morning, council members. The city has led the effort to transfer the responsibility and costs of treating disease and addiction to the overcrowded prison system. My name's Mark Casanova, I'm the executive director with Homeless Healthcare Los Angeles. Our staff, our board, and most importantly, our clients are outraged at what's going on in Skid Row because of the Safer Cities Initiative. We wonder at what cost does this safer city come? For homeless healthcare, we've had a reduction of 26% of the number of folks who are receiving our critical services out of our Skid Row site and whether they're one of the 4,800 that's been arrested or they're, they've relocated out of the area, it's clear that one in four are no longer receiving critical life-saving services. At what cost does this happen? As a community, are we willing to accept increased rates of HIV, hepatitis C virus, and other bloodborne infections among drug users in Skid Row? Are we willing to increase the drug-related deaths because folks can't access crucial services? We're not willing to accept these costs. A reevaluation of the current policy is needed and an initiative that emphasizes comprehensive care and drug treatment is sure to yield more favorable results. Homeless Healthcare Los Angeles believes that a safer city is not one that punishes its most vulnerable citizens, but one that emphasizes the humane and just treatment of all its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Senegal, Steve Diaz, Levita Marbury.
Good morning, council members. You have sanctioned the mass criminalization.
Could you just state your name for the record, I'm sorry?
I will say it at the end, thank you. You have sanctioned the mass criminalization of addiction. Simple possession charges force people out of subsidized housing for at least three years. The practice of escalating, escalating charges to possession for sales will result in permanently ending the chance of accessing most subsidized housing for over 1,000 people today. As the direct result of your Safer Cities Initiative, you will have increased homelessness in our community and substantially increase the amount of time that people will remain homeless on the streets of Los Angeles. My name is Steve Diaz, I'm with the Community Action Network.
Thank you. Greg Senegal, is Greg Senegal not here? Okay, he's not here. Okay, please go ahead, the next, Levita.
Good morning, council members. While the city attorney has pursued litigation against dumping of homeless people by hospitals and others, the city's Safer Cities Initiative has implemented the largest dumping campaign in history, sending thousands of homeless and poor people to jail, prison, and communities surrounding downtown with little or no resources. My name is Levita Marbury and I am a resident of downtown Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Rowe, Barbara Rowe, is she here? General, okay, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, council members. You've not just passively allowed, but directly empowered the LAPD to become the first and frontline response to homelessness and poverty in Skid Row, resulting in Nazi tactics, ghettoizing, and the absence of civil rights. I am Barbara Rowe, I live in downtown Los Angeles. I'm a voter, I'm a citizen of this country. What is going on with the police department is not right. Nobody's renting them in. Thank you.
Thank you. General Dogan, Gerardo Gomez, Pete White, and P. Gay Kennedy.
Good afternoon, council members. You have continually ignored the voice of our community. My name is General Dogan and I'm a resident of downtown Los Angeles and we are here today to make the following demands. One, the immediate termination of the enforcement arm of the Safer Cities Initiative, including unfair and unequal drug charges and sentences in the Fifth Street corridor. Number two, the immediate removal of LAPD Central Division's Captain Andy Smith and Jody Wakefield so as to return order to our community. Three, the immediate end to police brutality and other illegal activities by LAPD Central Division officers. And number four, an immediate stop to all quality of life enforcement until such time that everyone in the Central City East have access to housing. Power to the people.
Gerardo Gomez.
Good afternoon, city council members. The residents of downtown Los Angeles and our supporters throughout the city are committed to the city's health and safety. are called for an immediate end to mass civil and human right violations and racist policing and sentencing. We will not accept the ethnic cleansing of downtown or incarceration as a solution to homelessness and poverty. And in the words of Martin Luther King, he said, "An injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere, and we will overcome."
Good morning, council members.
On your watch!
How dare we with such fanfare this morning celebrate Black History Month when just a stone throw away, in the Skid Row community, 4,800 arrests were made in a three-month period. 4,800 arrests in a three-month period. So, we could sit around, and we could dance around, and we can say, "Happy Black History Month," but the reality is, is a huge travesty is taking place. You can't look at it. You really don't want to look at what you are running roughshod against. This is what and who you're running over on a daily basis. There is no Black History celebration for the folks in Skid Row today. We shame you. We say shame to you. We say we demand an end to the Safer Cities Initiative right now. We read the LA Times this morning, and we hear that 66 more police officers are going to be brought to Skid Row as part of gang suppression. There are no gangs in Skid Row. If I were council member sitting behind those podiums, I would be outraged. Gang violence does not plague Skid Row. Not the gang violence that you're talking about. The gang violence we see is gang violence by the LAPD.
Thank you. Pega Kennedy. Ms. Kennedy, followed by Walter Patton and Donna Valiente. Is Pega Kennedy here? No. Okay. Walter Patton.
Good afternoon, council.
On your watch!
The city has led an effort to transfer the responsibility and cost of treating the disease of addiction to the overcrowded state prison system. My name is Walter Patton, and I'm with LAP Community. On a personal note, I graduated from LA City College in 1999, and my key speaker there at that time was Police Chief Parks. I'm a recovering addict. I was on Skid Row. There's no way possible he could have spoke at my graduation because he probably would have been in jail with these policies. We asked him, yes, there should be consequences, but consequences, you can't learn anything in the prisons. You have to learn something through some kind of a recovery program. And we're here because, you know what? I'm a homeowner today. I'm a homeowner. I pay lots of taxes. I work 72 hours, so I'm giving lots of taxes to this government. There's no, now, guess what? All those taxes are probably going into housing people for petty possession charges or for throwing the cigarette butts down on the ground. I'm quite sure the city has much more things to do with their money than prosecuting people for throwing a cigarette butt on the ground. All right. Thank you very much. My name is Walter Patton.
Thank you. Donna Valiente. Donna?
I don't know if you can hear me up there. This ought to work.
Okay.
Good morning, council members.
On your watch!
I'm a poet and a published writer, and I would like to read a poem that I have written for you. It's called "The Shackles Must Come Off." If you want to change the world for the better, then you must start with ourselves. Don't you know? Can't you see? It's you and I that makes the difference, and we can start right here in Central City East, our own community. What you do and what you see can change a life. A little kindness can do wonders, you see. The shackles must come off. You can no longer keep us bound. You can no longer keep our spirits down. We stand for what is right, and we have come to shine the light on the people's point of view, to take back our dignity. These are God-given, and you can't take them away from us, you see. But this you try to do and more. Just look what you're doing to the homeless and the poor. We have come to say that we do not like what we see, so now we are taking off these shackles, and we are taking back our streets. We can stand in dignity, but there's no dignity in all the things that you do. What if by some odd chance, all of it was happening to you? Would you not also stand up for what you know is right and true? So, we will never give you up, you see, because we still live in the land of the brave and the home of the free, and we will bravely stand shackle-free and boldly claim our victory. Thank you.
Okay, we have, we have lost a quorum of the city council, so we can hear from a few other speakers, but it is not an official meeting. Yeah. If we could have you be the last speaker, and then we'll hear the young woman there from the other part. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, city council members.
On your watch!
The LAPD has made 1,400 drug sales arrests in just four months in a 50-square-block area, of which almost 80% were possession for sales. In other words, no sale took place. It is impossible for 1,400 actual drug dealers to operate in a 50-square-block area. This intentional practice of escalating simple possession charges to sales cases results in mass incarceration of those struggling with the disease of addiction instead of the treatment required by Prop. 36 and supported by 61% of the California voters. The policies that you oversee through safer cities traumatizes, criminalizes, an entire community that is predominantly African-American. What you fail to realize is that my community is also home to the largest recovery community in the city of Los Angeles. Now, discrimination can be proven in two ways. You can prove it by discriminatory intent. You can prove it by discriminatory impact. 1,400 arrests in four months shows what your intent is. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to hear from Diane Lawrence. Is that your name? And Duke Russell?
Who's street? Our street!
Thank you.
Who's street? Our street!
Sir, please, if we would let, we gave you had the opportunity to speak. This woman would like to have a chance to speak. Ms. Lawrence.
Thank you.
Apologies. Go ahead, please.
Okay. Let's see. All right. Several years ago...
Madam President, if you could just give them a warning that they are disrupting the meeting so that...
Yes, we will give you official warning of disrupting this meeting. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Okay. Several years ago, a motion to install temporary street barriers preventing traffic from entering our neighborhood was presented to this chamber by Councilman Ludlow, and it passed. This motion to extend it will be coming up again in a few months. Unfortunately, there are many problems and continue to be. The motion contained justification based on pure anecdotes from residents, including a lawyer who worked for Ludlow at the time who were pushing for the barriers. There had been no Department of Transportation investigation. The crime statistics didn't support the claim in the motion of high crime. The LAPD, which has a station in our neighborhood, was not consulted or accommodated, and the motion was not brought to the attention of the neighbors so that we could come down here to address the city council. We all woke up one day, and there were barriers. Councilman Wesson has continued to support these barriers. For the first time in Department of Transportation's history, they have not been allowed to do an investigation. A full barrier was installed right next to the fire department, impeding their ability to respond to our and surrounding neighborhoods. There's a circulating petition which shows there is community support to open up this full barrier next to the station, so we're wondering why Councilman Wesson, who I noticed has left, is not supporting, is continuing to support keeping a full barrier up despite protest from the LAPD, despite the low crime stats, despite the fact that there's no evidence presented to justify a full barrier in this important position. And we hope as we move forward with this difficult and contentious issue in our neighborhood, Councilman Wesson will do as he originally promised, which is honor the needs of the LAPD, do a legitimate transportation investigation, and offer the compromise he said he would give the neighborhood, which is to support changing that full barrier to a partial barrier, allowing the fire station to come and go unimpeded. Why he continues to support a full barrier and ignore all these other authorities is beyond my and many people in our residents' understanding, and I'll be back again later on.
Thank you for staying till the end patience, Mr. Duke Russell. Sir, I'll get to you. Mr. Russell. No, no, no. Sir, hold on one second. Duke Russell will, I understand, sir, but I had called Mr. Russell before you.
Madam President, members of the council, good afternoon. My name is Duke Russell. Yesterday, I asked my friend Louis Zamperini to speak today, but he could not. He hopes you can hear him speak tomorrow at the 15th Annual Abe Lincoln Remembrance at the Los Angeles National Cemetery in Westwood, next to UCLA, at 11:00 a.m. Zamperini believes, as millions do, that Lincoln is a great role model for young and old, especially regarding how a poor boy changed his life by reading, which can help kids stay out of gangs. Zamperini is 90. He is a 1936 Olympian, member of the USC Athletic Hall of Fame, World War II Army Air Corps survivor of 47 days in a life raft and two years as a prisoner of war. He founded Victory Boys Club. He speaks internationally. He is an author. A movie is being made of his life starring Nicolas Cage. He believes the spirit of Lincoln will always inspire young and old if the people learn about what he did. So, please, come out tomorrow if you can. Tell your friends. It's a friendly, beautiful, wonderful day. We've been doing it for 15 years, and it's an asset to the city of Los Angeles. Please, spread the word about Abraham Lincoln reading and Louis Zamperini. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins, followed by Ted Newbauer.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ms. Sylvia Hawkins. Again, we must address, at this time, registration mixed with all charter schools and all university schools. We must say no on any registration to vote to enter or enroll in any school. With this Hawk 8 beginning to begin in the United States of America, voting for anything at this time is no. Dealing with our youth and beginning of all this destruction, those who would go to this battle of war first would be A-plus and B-plus students. If we begin registering first to vote, I'm not with vote or die. We can't again touch anything that is electricity, die vote machines to vote.
Madam President...
Or we will be electrocuted.
Thank you. If you could have it based on something that the city has authority over.
Pardon me?
If you could base your comments, the city attorney is indicating that it needs to be focused on what is under the responsibility of the city of Los Angeles.
Okay. The responsibility is dealing with electric shock or stroke if we use certain devices. Should we vote on online WWW? Should we keep voting, dealing with ballots at different locations? Should we deal with voting a no, or should we deal with debating? Mine is debating. That is on the city issues.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hawkins.
My name is...
Mr. Newbauer.
Thank you. You just lacking a...
A reminder that we have lost a quorum, but I believe we're allowing this person to speak because he's waited here all morning.
That's correct.
Thank you for the clock. This is a new edition. The writer has said, "Character is what you are in the dark." Now, we've had a very nice presentation this morning. We've had two ambassadors. We had two singers. We had lots of people. But behind the scenes, something else is being done. Behind the scenes, and I understand that the population of Skid Row is 80% black, so I have the opportunity to speak up for the opposite side of the aisle in memory of my service. Proposition 36 funds are supposed to be available for everyone. They're not supposed to be diverted or deleted because people stand in the way of your pet developers. Now, we've just had an example of what happens when people are not showing good faith, when people, we just lost Anna Nicole Smith, and if someone had paid attention to her son and his problem, they could have ended up saving three lives, two lives for sure, and possibly a third in the form of his, of her new daughter. So, let's follow the advice of our esteemed city attorney when he said, "Invest in people." That's what I'm asking you to do today. Let's not push people out of the way because they're in the way of somebody's finances. Let's invest in people. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Autry, and then we will go out to the Valley, and then we do have announcements and some adjourning motions that we will do. Ms. Autry.
Thank you. Excuse me. Good afternoon. My name is Yvonne Michelle Autry, and I'm also a resident of this downtown area. I'm not a substance abuser. I'm not an alcoholic. I'm not in recovery. However, I am economically challenged. I do appreciate the availability thus far because of our efforts of low-income housing. And it was really very nice, the pomp and circumstance this morning, but that again is really hypocritical if you're only honoring African-Americans that are visible and that are celebrities. We are all Americans. We are all human beings, and in this country, we all deserve to be recognized as such, and we have civil rights, and all of our civil rights and human rights. We have the right to have them protected, not just the ones that are more visible, and not just those who have attained celebrity status. I love my people, and I love the people who you honored this morning. But we do not live in an aristocracy or an oligarchy. This is a democracy. I have to remind you, even as you try to return to this kind of, you know, new world order, return to Babylonian, Roman ethics, you know, where you practice economic discrimination as well as racism. I'm with the LA CAN organization, and like I said, it becomes a farce and hypocritical when you honor black people that are visible, but the black people in the street who are being constantly harassed by the police and other people of color and veterans, people of various different ethnicities who are being illegally detained, overdetained. They're being harassed. They're being abused and exploited. This type of inhumanity we will not stand for. Again, you are accountable to us as constituents. You are accountable to us as citizens, and ultimately, you are accountable to us as human beings, and we will not allow you to continue to disregard our civil rights.
Thank you. Like to go out to the San Fernando Valley. We have two speakers out there, Sharon Brewer and Zuma Dog.
Wow. Three hours of presentations to public, or actually, three and a half hours to public comment. Hi, my name is Sharon Brewer. My comments have to do with CD6. I have received a postcard from the West Van Eyes Lake Balboa Neighborhood Council announcing a candidate form Wednesday, February 7th, to hear from and ask questions of candidates for CD6. When I arrived at the meeting, I found out that a moderator would control the questions asked. I submitted two cards, one regarding Lake Balboa Park safety, and the other had to do with large events in the Sepulveda Basin. None of the questions selected dealt with the south, with south of Victory Boulevard, Sepulveda Basin, part of CD6. I'm not surprised that my questions were not asked considering my comments during public comment regarding CD6 council member. All candidates running for CD6 were present. Lake Balboa Park, illegally parked cars. On Sunday, February 4th, at 1:35 p.m., I called Office of Public Safety because of approximately 15 illegally parked cars on the grass at parking lot number one. 1:45 p.m., an OPS truck drove past parking lot number one. 2:00 p.m., I called OPS again to ask where the officer was. I was told that it was up to the discretion of the officer whether they would do anything about the illegal about the illegal cars. Until I asked for Lieutenant Ray Ingalls, was I told that an officer would meet me in the parking lot. At 2:05, the officer arrived. I pointed out the cars illegally parked. He then informed me that he had only four tickets in his book, meaning only four cars would get tickets. He said he had to go to Griffith Park to get another book. Being told that it is up to the discretion of the officer whether they do their job or not enforcing the law, and that an officer would not have sufficient blank ticket books so he can do his job of public safety is not acceptable. Mr. Labange, can you and your committee help me with Lake Balboa problems? The illegal parking happens throughout the park. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Zumadog. Zumadog?
Yeah, yeah. First of all, you want to build a subway to the sea, you want to fix the schools, you want to restore Grand Avenue. You can't even fix the clock here on this podium. Do me a favor, before you try building a subway to the sea, will you fix the damn clock? Secondly, in case you missed it, Mayor Antonio Villagrosa sings from the public comment podium, just like Zumadog has so many times, and this meeting was so long, I already whipped over to the library, the Van Nuys Library, and I already posted it on my website, YouTube. Just go to youtube.com/villagrosa, and you can watch the mayor sing just like Zumadog and vote who's a better singer, Zumadog Singing Journey or the mayor singing Stevie Wonder. I think it's a landslide, y'all, yeah, yeah. Speaking about the mayor and trying to fix the schools, let's talk a little bit about LAUSD, y'all. First of all, the mayor's spending all kinds of money to defend the AB 1381 that's guaranteed to keep on losing, y'all, and it's disruptive. Well, so they go, "That's okay, because it's with private money." The mayor raised private funding, y'all. And now he's trying to take over the school board. The mayor is attempting to take over the Los Edge of the School Board elections by backing with his own political steamroll machine, his own candidates, and it's completely inappropriate because state charter says that the schools should be run separately from the city hall. So what are you doing, mayor? You're violating the spirit of the Constitution. And I like to say, they again say, "Well, it's with private money that we're backing these candidates." Well, excuse me, mayor, Zumadog heard that those people donating private money also have construction projects in front of the city that they're waiting for the mayor to approve, y'all. So Zumadog will be looking into this private money. What contracts are before the city with these construction projects that the mayor will be signing off on? And I think the LA Times and Daily News and LA Weekly all need to start looking into this, y'all. And speaking of these papers, thank you, Councilman Zion, Councilman Smith, and candidate Alvin Parra for your quotes that I'll be using in my article coming out next week. And Zumadog would also like to say, Bill Rosendahl, shame on you for allowing Mark Antonio Grant and Linda Lux to steamroll the city meetings, the neighborhood councils, for the Venice Expression Group. If Mayor Antonio wants to just prevent public input, have him send down his gang thugs that watch these meetings like he does for the town hall. I will not allow Mark Antonio Grant and Linda Sucks Lux to hijack the community.
Please, thank you. Finished with your comments. I'd like to... Is there any announcements? Yes, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to restate what one of the speakers spoke, that is the 15th Annual Abe Lincoln Remembrance at the property at the National Cemetery in Westwood at 11 o'clock on Saturday morning. And you know, this is an incredible opportunity for people to listen to music that Mr. Lincoln listened to and that people were involved in, and feel the spirit of Abe Lincoln, and also enjoy being with other people who believe the same way. So if you can make it at 11 a.m. this Saturday, February 10th, to Los Angeles National Cemetery, I will tell you, it'll be a fantastic event. And thank you for bringing that up. The second announcement is just to announce that next week, on Tuesday, I want to do an official journey motion, if I could do that, on behalf of a dear friend of mine, Ronald Jason Palmeri, whose mother just passed away, and she was an incredible lady, which I'll talk more about next Tuesday. But this Sunday, February 11th, at 10 a.m. at the Ed Park Memorial Eternal Light Chapel in Mission Hills, the family will be having a service. And they suggest that if you'd like to make a donation, make it to the temple, call Ami in West Hollywood. But we'll do a more formal presentation next Tuesday. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you for the announcement.
Thank you.
I've not... The meeting is now adjourned. I know there's a special budget and finance meeting at 2 o'clock.
2 o'clock. Also, budget and finance in the community on Monday at the Epic Center, and that's 3980 Menlo Boulevard, and that's for CD 8, 9, and 15. And that's at 6 o'clock.
Yes. Mr. Perry?
I just want to announce an occasion which I didn't think I would live long enough to see. The reopening of the South Park Bandshell for Black History Month. Now, I started working on this project when I worked for the previous council member, and now we are reopening it, February 10th, tomorrow, Saturday, 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. There will be entertainment, refreshments, and much celebration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This adjourns our meeting.